Okay, I think we're starting now. Good evening and welcome to the School Board Study Session. It's Monday, June 15, 2020, and it's 6:00 PM. Today, this study session will be conducted via Hangouts Meet. It is being livestreamed by BECTV and will be replayed for the usual BECTV replay schedule. So I am going to do a roll call for attendance of board members. So please let us know that you're present. Director Beth Bibi. Your microphone is out.
Here.
Thank you. Director Tom Bennett.
Here.
Director Maya Olson.
Here.
Director James Sorum.
Here.
Director Heather Starks.
Here.
Director Dawn Steiger.
Here.
And then Corey Mann is present. I think I'm having issues with my microphone here. Okay, so the first item in the agenda today, oh, and this is, this is a study session, so it's a more informal type of format than the regular school board meeting is. So I probably won't be addressing you as directors, but just on there with your names, your first names. Okay, so the first item in the agenda today is the Fall Planning Survey Results, and I will be calling Mr. Rick Kaufman for this presentation tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, super duper proud to talk to you, members of the school board. It is my pleasure to present to you the results of our surveys that we shared. I'm just going to pop up on the screen. The Return to School Survey Staff and Family Results. I hope you can see that. If I could get a verbal from anyone?
Yep, looks good.
Great, thank you. So what, I'm going to present to you the staff survey results first, and then we'll share the family results, and then I'll open it up for questions. I just have a few slides. So the staff survey methodology was emailed to all employees. It was in the field for 10 days, May 19 through the 29th. All responses were this. We received over 1,500 respondents to the survey for overall response rate of 71%, which is phenomenal, quite frankly. And another 606 open-ended responses, including 81 from substitute staff members and unsure slider involvement as well. There were 207 substitutes that actually participated in a survey, thanks to Mary Burrows and HR in sending that out to our list of substitute staff members. I want to say on the open-ended responses, we're still doing some analysis of that for both staff and for parents. In this next slide, you'll see that, actually I want to put this down. What you see on this next slide is the breakout by employee groups. And here's where you will actually see how high in terms of the response rate, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our clerical personnel and health associates. The participation rate exceeded the minimum number that's needed to generalize results with a 5% margin of error. It's indicated as the asterisk, and you'll see for teachers, clerical and health associates, you know, health associates 100%, but 90, barely 100% for teachers and clerical and paras were over 80%. We saw decreasing participants with some of our groups, even though we considered efforts to make sure that they had access to complete the survey. But even still, all these response rates were significantly higher than what we typically see when we survey staff. Community head, you'll see it's, most of these employees, majority of these employees are hourly employees, so we expected to see a smaller grouping. I should point out that there were 162, I'm sorry, this is on the family one. So the big question for both families was the intent to return to school this fall. So very simply, we asked staff, do you plan to return to school? You can see the majority of them do plan to return to school in the fall. Over 77, about 77, about 16% were uncertain and a very small percent were no. And then just over 6% had requested work from home accommodations because of health reasons, either for themselves or for members of their family. This shows you the intent to return by position. And again, you'll see the majority of our staff and all of our employee group had indicated yes, that they plan to return to school. But the next highest uncertainty also reflected that throughout. What is, what we did in this next one was to ask specifically, upon return to school, would improve or in terms of your comfort level to, or would it change the school? So as you can see, the majority of our staff members, they were comfortable with some concerns, and I'll address those in a minute here. We also had about a quarter of our popular employees were split between somewhat comfortable and not at all comfortable. In terms of that were comfortable, no concerns indicated. And then again, you'll see by empty groups, the comfort level returning by position. Again, for the most part, it was uniform in terms of comfortable with concern indicated in the green bar and somewhat comfortable in the red. And then again, it's somewhat equal distribution based on the number of employees that participated by group, the comfort level. So then when we asked, the question is, okay, what would help? Or what is it that would make you feel more comfortable? So those that indicated comfortable with concern, these were the top seven. Any of these were, didn't even register five. So you'll see very clearly where our staff is strongly supportive in terms of comfort factors, is sure that there's adequate cleaning supply, what we mean by this, hand sanitizers in classrooms and office spaces, equal access to that, as well as cleaning spaces, significant numbers of staff. And again, when we broke this down by all employee group, similar across the board. And then you see the other 80% was the Minnesota Department of Health Guidelines. And these are the guidelines of social, in some cases, wearing of masks and all we expect to see will be coming out of MDH and Minnesota Department of Health. In terms of staff health screening, so for those of you that may not, who are not aware that in our childcare and in our food service this year, when we were enclosed and any building had to do a staff health screening, so a workplace, which was answer questions, what, did you have a fever? Do you have a cough? Any respiratory illness or feelings of that nature? And if that was the case, then they're allowed to work that day or until those symptoms subside, or in some cases, if they were being tested for COVID-19. So staff indicated that they would expect a comfort level. He continued to do that daily health screening. It is interesting, as I reviewed the responses both for parents and for staff, that there is a deep concern members and parents sending children to school that are sick or coughing. And so I think why this was rated significantly up there. And PPE had more to do with the wearing of masks, distancing and student health screening. So again, all of these were the tops among all the employee groups. So then when we asked the question, would you be willing to wear a mask here? That a majority of the employee groups did indicate that yes, would wear a mask. But you'll see a significant number stated that sometimes, in other words, in the open-ended responses, that they support wearing a mask in areas where there were lots of people if doing their job. For example, a teacher, teachers expressed the concern about wearing a mask and not being able to connect with students, or the inflections of their voice in delivery of an assignment to our talking man, and how that mask might would, quite frankly, mask their void, their ability to connect with students. So that's where you see that sometimes came in and shows up in the open-ended responses. And then certainly, there are folks that simply said no, that they do not favor wearing a mask in school, even though right now that is the current CDC and MDH guidelines. And what's interesting here is our personnel in our childcare, but food service really was our, was our test case over the last two minutes because staff were required to wear masks, practicing social distancing. And we found that to be adjustment, took some adjusting because staff would often wear their mask, but would have them down or not cover their mouth or their nose. And that it was a constant reminder to let people know that it was in their best interest for their coworkers as well. And then in that, we can return with respect to the staff. This is where we have a very similar question of the intent to return in the fall. And you'll see, most of our students do fall within the teacher and the paraprofessional ranks and then do dual roles in terms of substitute for food service and paras or teach. But by and large, the majority of them do say yes, that they plan to return in the fall. What this equates out to remains to be seen in terms, once the guidelines come out and really truly whether there will have substitutes in the fall. But with budget, it occurred in our district and in other districts, there is some belief that will have substitutes when needed. But in this case, it does indicate plan to return in the fall. Talk about the parent survey again. It was emailed to all house, it was in the field the same time, 10 days, May 19 through the 29th, responses. And we received nearly 3,800, that's pretty phenomenal. And another 1,300 ended responses. And this is why it's taken us a little bit longer to do an analysis on the open-ended responses. But we're, it really breaking it down for us and will give us some good data. So what we see here is the response rate by grade level. And in all cases, other than early childhood or preschool, again, the responses exceeded the minimum number needed to generalize results with a 5% margin of error. And you will see when we have the parents or guardians that yes, that would indicate if they had a child in three or four, two or even one grade level. So that's why you'll see that there's actually, the numbers are reflected in the parents and guardians. But the response rate again, over three per four K through 12 parents, higher than what we typically would see in a survey to parents that particularly of this nature went to a broad expansive families. Really, the question is, do you intend to send your child or children to school in fall? And the majority, as you see, 64% indicated yes, that they would be sending their children to school. We've had about a third of them that responded that uncertain, and I'll talk about uncertainty in more detail here in a minute. But a very small percentage indicated no, or the other option was that they would, for health reasons, other accommodations. And whether that was online or some other way, they didn't intend to send their child to school, or would be looking for some other kind of accommodations. Now, when we broke this down by level, you will see again, rather than our early childhood, and by the way, the early childhood were 120 parents indicated the survey. And I also should point out that we had the survey translated and we had 162 Spanish, to the Spanish survey, and 14 Somali parents responded. Those numbers are reflected in these, this tonight. We did add all of these together. So you will see across the three levels, go pretty consistent of an intended return to school. But again, need to look at those uncertainties. That's the significant number of risk level, and certainly at early childhood, the uncertainty level. The question then is, in terms of no or uncertain on the survey, it comes to the question, which educational delivery option did you your child? And 71% said hybrid. As you know, the traditional school, some part of the week or day in school and some part of the week or day that they're at form of remote learning. And as we develop our, the fall delivery options, this is important things that's working on that. What's also interesting is we had about, that indicated online only. And another favorite going, having, sending their child back to school at all, that they say option only. And then just under 2%, homeschool and just over 1% that wish to enroll their child into a private school or, and these were for those individuals that just indicated no on that previous question. If you look at the level, again, you'll see distance. We identify this as distance in blue, but what really is the, corresponds with individuals that said they want to take online courses only for a variety of safety reasons. Very focused, indicated the hybrid, as you can see, equally distributed across the four levels, particularly people that took the survey at each one of those levels. Went back. So we asked, what are the primary concerns you as a parent have for your children returning to school? As you can see, the first one says, what's not on there is the, it says rooms are gathering sites that are not disinfected. So this for staff as well, again, parents indicated by 62% to make sure that there is adequate hand sanitizer, hand washing during the day as well as classrooms that are locating to be cleaned on a daily basis. They also, what would be concerning to them is health, that health guidelines were not identified with the MDH guidelines at six foot distance. And then a number of them, by the way, this was a no. So they were able to identify the ability or availability of reinforced to making sure that their kids were sanitized, not only hands, but hand washing throughout the day. The other concern actions has had to do with how large students would be returning to whole classrooms or in cafeterias, pasting periods nature. There was concerns, obviously, with the readjustment to school, reflected in some of the other survey data that shows that parents have a concern about readjusting to school after being out for a very extended period of time. Transportation and childcare and care for family rounded out. There were a lot, but none of them were over 2%. But transportation and childcare and for family. Under transportation, this is very important to us because as we developing our fall planning, we know that at least based on the current H guidelines, our buses can't transport the same number of students we've done in the past on a daily basis for each. Into the workforce. And then the care for family really showed up here because a number of the respondents, a majority of the respondents were either teachers in our district or teachers in other districts. And because not all districts will have the same educational delivery, exact replication, they'll have, we have similar models. The question, the concern that they had is that if they were teaching in Bloomington and their child was at home, that creates an issue for them that it doesn't align with when they would be home and their child would be at school. And similar, similar stories or reflections on that as well. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. And I'm going to remove this and return to, so I can see y'all. I'll leave this up there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, questions? Please raise your hand. I think I can see you all in my grid. Maya.
So I'm just wondering if you broke it down as far as teachers being comfortable to return to school, do you have an idea as to what grades they teach? Because, because you know, teach or what classes they teach? Because teachers who are teaching, you know, early childhood or kindergarten or special education will have more trouble with distancing from their children.
So we didn't go, we didn't have any questions that broke it down by that. What I was looking for here, Director Olson, here it is, is we were able to disaggregate for that no, yes, or uncertainty or other accommodations. And majority of staff that were uncertain, if you look at all the employee groups, the largest number of uncertainty came from our teacher group. I think I showed you that slide. And, but it didn't indicate for them whether it was a special ed teacher or early childhood teacher. We didn't disaggregate.
Yeah, I was looking at the number of teachers that we're uncertain about coming back and remembering that we've had a substitute shortage. And given that, I'm wondering, would we, you know, where would we get these teachers? You know, because I thought, well, maybe we can get a long call sub for this coming year for some of those. Or, you know, do we, you know, depending on the hybrid model, you know, and how it's laid out, do some do distance learning? I actually sent an article out to, to some. And if, if our school board members get the AMSD newsletter, there was a really excellent article in there about what is happening throughout the world and how they're going back to school. And, and so I don't know if this is the time for that, but I'm looking at what we have here. And I'm just curious to know how confident you are, Rick, that we will have enough teachers. Are other schools cutting budgets and also dropping positions? So there's more people available to come into our subpool or that we can hire on? Would this be something where there's, you know, someone can request a leave of absence given the COVID virus so that they, they could still maintain, you know, their, their tenure and seniority, but because of the situation, they would prefer not to be on campus?
So you know, really good questions. And I think I will preface the response is that this was a snapshot in time. And I think if we were to do that survey, maybe in a week or two, it might be changed. We do intend to do another round of surveys of staff as well as parents for a variety of reasons, obviously. One is, I think a lot of people are waiting to see two things. One, what will be the guidance from MDH? And two, what will be the fall, those educational models? What do they look like? As you know, you received, as well as our parents and staff, we provided communication just before we left for our summer break about the fall educational models that have been developed. And over that period of time, in the last three weeks or two weeks, there's been significant amount of work that John Weiser and Katrina and Mezra and Rachel Jens and, and a whole host of other folks that are working on those. They've done a monumental work. That, once we start to share that information, we expect that the surveys that we will do will be more representative sampling and will do demographics to be able to break that down. So they're really good questions, but. All those answers and share those same kind of substitutes again, and making sure that they're aware of that information so they can make informed choices. So, you know, I would say too early to tell right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you very much. I really enjoyed reading this and kind of wanting to know out there what, what was happening? What were people thinking? And, you know, what are the concerns? So this was, I think, a really needed snapshot, as you call it. And I think it's really helped us to get a better grasp of what we're working with. And then as we get these other snapshots, I think that, that will really help. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Heather.
So kind of in that same line of thinking for, for future surveys or however we're talking to, to families and teachers, I'd be curious too about the responses for families who have either a child in English language, an English language learner or a special education student. And I do not believe that you had to ask those questions, those demographic questions in this survey, but that would be two subgroups, both from the family perspective and the teacher perspective. I'd be interested in if they have different perspectives about the importance of being in person versus being able to do distance learning. And then the other, and I don't need an answer for this now, so this is a follow-up question for later, but when you had 162 Spanish-speaking families and 14 Somali language families, I'm curious as to what percentage that is to our actual enrollment. I know surveys are really challenging to get out and to get answered, but I'm just curious as to how representative that is for those groups.
Yeah, and we should, I should note too that I talked with Sophia and Hema, who would do the translations for us. And they both indicate that a number, quite a few parents, we don't, again, we can't quantify it, will take the English version. In fact, they, it's the first choice to take that. We do offer those other surveys for, obviously for families. And 162 Spanish-speaking families taking the survey is helpful, but it's a good question. I will say the next survey will not be sending it home like this. It will be a, it will be done as sampling, a six, probably a 600 family or parent survey that does break it into demographics and allows us to survey between 110 and 120 each of our BIPOC, Black Indigenous and Person of Color population so that we, a good stratification of all of those parents in our district. And by those questions, we can disaggregate that.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Me, can you see me?
Yes.
This is Jim. Yeah, as, as you mentioned, this is a snapshot as of now. And in fact, it's only in June and the economy picks up. A lot of people will probably be going back to work. And then, so that's going to change their minds a little bit too, as they get into that. The big concern is the before and after school programming and transportation, with only 13% saying that that's a concern. As we talked before, you know, if the Department of Education and transportation says we have to do so much restricting of the students, you know, that's going to be a real issue that more than, more than one parent. So as we see some more surveys coming up in July and at the end of July, you know, that's going to really be more, more helpful with the understanding of this. But this is, this has been a good snapshot. And I know we've got a couple of more meetings where we're going to listen to Andy Kubis and John Weiser about some other of the presentations. I know as a grandparent of five children in the district, and we go back to some kind of a hybrid class. And my daughter being a teacher and her husband being in the Air National Guard, I suspect I'm going to wind up becoming a tutor or a part-time teacher with, with the situations the way they are now. And I'm kind of looking forward to that, but not really.
Thank you, Tim. Dawn, you have a question?
I just wanted to ask, Rick, maybe you said when the next survey would be going out, but I just wanted to make sure I caught that, or did you not give a timeline? And, and are we waiting until we do have more direction? Is that what you said? And, and are we waiting until we do have more direction? Is that what you said?
What I think the next steps for us is twofold. We, we have expressed an interest in at least trying to maybe getting a snapshot, what we call a brush fire survey of our BIPOC population to really indicate, get a better sense of how many of, of our parents of color that are interested in returning to school or hybrid or not, just so that it could, it is clearly reflected in, in our work that, where we're going. And then, once we get more of our information about our fall models out there, and I think it's really important that we start to hone in on where parents are, what are they specifically in favor of? How many would choose online learning? How many are in favor of, of the traditional model? And frankly, how many just want school to be back in the same way it's always been? Because we saw that in the open ended questions. So in terms of timing, we'll do it when we, when we have more information to be able to share. And if we need to do another one, the closer we get to school. But I do believe in us for us to capture it, to really land on, on our models. We're going to have to do it no later than mid to late July and probably more mid July. It's going to be in the field at least two weeks to get the data that we need.
Thank you.
Heather.
Okay. So I just wanted to touch on, you mentioned the open ended questions. I know that from an organizational standpoint, that's, that's a nightmare to put together. But as a parent who filled out the survey, I really appreciate the opportunity to have that open ended, you know, opportunity to say, well, this, the, the answers or the options I had didn't quite reflect what I'm thinking, or here is something that, you know, I want to add. So I really do appreciate that when the surveys go out and they have that open ended piece, because I do feel like you're right, you get a little bit better flavor than just the multiple choice. So thank you.
Maya.
And that, that might tie in with what I was going to say too, because some of the same teachers who might have the most concerns as far as, you know, children who will not wear masks, for example, if they are on the autism spectrum, or they're afraid of the teacher when the teacher has a mask on, or young children and children with special needs and children in special education, we have to work very closely with and one on one. It's very difficult to put them in different corners and work with them. And you use a lot of manipulatives, like based on blocks. But at the same time, while they might have more concerns, they are also the ones I find that most want to work in person. They're the ones who have the concern about the distance learning because they really need that, that connection with them. So, yeah, it's just a concern that, that I know that we're going to have to pay attention to.
Yeah, Mr. Kaufman. So for that, you brought up the conversation about the mask and what the preferences of, of the different staff members is in terms of wearing the mask or not. Is there anything you can tell us about maybe the option of having the shield, wearing the shield and, and how, how effective is it? And in terms of cost, is there anything, any more information you can give us?
Well, I mean, we do, we, we had shields and we were using shields. So they, some employees certainly liked using those over the masks. They felt they could breathe better. We didn't ask specifically about face shields, particularly because the, we don't have, the quantity, we don't, we don't have as much as we did with the masks. So if we wanted to get that specific, we would certainly put that in the next survey too, to identify, would you prefer wearing a mask or a face shield?
Okay. Because I'd be curious to know too, in terms of cost, how, how different that would be.
Yeah, teachers would tell you, they prefer, I mean, they would prefer both because you, it's just a double layered, extra layer. Part of that is educating staff and parents that persons that wear a mask is not for those protections, really is protecting others around them. And that's why when the open ended questions was, when it came to staff, they really, they, there was a, quite a few folks that talked about those guidelines that you're right, Director Olson, that kids that, it's hard for kids to keep those masks on. And they cough and they sneeze and they don't cover them, their nose. That is a concern that our staff expressed in those open ended responses, but that, my understanding is we can't require students to wear masks. We can require staff to wear masks, but that is just, that was brought up a number of times.
Thank you. Maya?
Are we looking into the, the Plexiglas shields, you know, around the desks?
So Rob Zivkovich is leading a facilities planning group and they're looking at all various different options.
Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions or thoughts? Members? Beth?
Yeah, the concern about whether students are going to be able to get there, you know, given the restrictions by the Department of Health. You know, it's just a big question mark for me. And since attendance is so key to our students' learning, do you think that there might be a point where they release or give us more leeway on that if kids are wearing masks and if buses are sanitized?
I think with three, 400 school systems in the state, MDE is going to try to come out with something that is uniformed and will be guidelines that school districts will be expected to follow and guidelines that would be strongly advised they follow. They continue to collect feedback. In fact, we just received this, late this afternoon, a survey from MDE to send out to parents. And looking at that, it's a way for them just to try and assess. Most of the questions are around distance learning. It wasn't the kind of questions that we asked. So I think they're looking at the small segment, but hard to say, Director Bebe, at this point again.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. I guess we're ready to move on to our next item. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Okay, so we're going to our next one, which is the distance learning survey results. And for this presentation, we have here tonight, Dr. Dave Heistad and Dr. Julio Caesar, and they're both from the Research, Evaluation and Assessment Department.
Thank you, Chair Kaufman, Board Directors, Superintendent Fujitaki. This survey was, was sent to all teachers. And it focused on aspects of distance learning. I'm going to present the quantitative results and then Dr. Caesar will present qualitative. The qualitative are quite interesting, and I think we're going to devote the most time to that. We had volunteers from the University of Minnesota. We had a team of qualitative experts work on calling the themes from the qualitative. We weren't able to get that in the board packet. So this will be the first time that you've had a chance to see those themes. I will start with the first theme in the quantitative analysis was an answer to a question about, I feel nervous when I think about current situations. And this, this presentation was in the field at the time, not only of the pandemic, but also of the, the racial and police abuse situation. And so it's not too surprising that 85% of the respondents agreed with that statement. But this general theme is that there was a lot of stress that teachers were experiencing. 80% worried about the health of their family members. And 55% said that they felt stressed out about leaving the house. There are other items in this category, so the general theme is it was difficult doing distance learning. Then we asked about workload and teachers, about 43% of the teachers said that there was much more time in planning for distance learning than in the typical situation. And 43% said it was too much. 47% said it was about right. The amount of time communicating with parents, also 34% of the teachers said it was too much time compared to what would be optimal. 57% said it was about right. And then compared to face to face instruction, assignments were being completed by students less frequently. And 70% of the teachers agreed with that statement. Only 20% of the teachers said it was about the same frequency of turning in assignments. So this was another source of, of worry for teachers. And a lot of the qualitative statements talked about the degree to which students were actively engaging and completing assignments. The quality of work being submitted by the majority of students, 35, 46% of the respondents said either somewhat poor or poor. So it wasn't just the quantity, but also the quality of the assignments. And then we asked a question about students participating online beyond just the attendance activities. So 64% of the respondents of the teachers said yes, but 27% said no. So that 27% of the teachers said the majority of their students were not participating beyond just taking attendance. So they might just sign in and then not participate in the instruction. And as Julio will talk about, they were quite concerned about this percentage of students that were disengaged. And worried that the, the students that were already doing well were completing their assignments. And the students that were already having difficulties tended not to engage. Now, some of the positives, 80% of the teachers agreed that the tools and resources provided for teaching during distant, distant learning were, were adequate. And, and that was good. And it goes along with another positive that 92% of the teachers felt that they were being supported by their district administration, by their building administration. And then I didn't put this slide up, but 3/4 said they thought they were being supported well by district administration. So there were lots of comments in a qualitative praising individual administrators, people in technology that were problem solving and people providing support with mental health and, and other social emotional concerns. Then we asked several questions that are on the state survey about feeling having symptoms of depression. And it turns out that over 50% of the teachers were experiencing some of these symptoms. 49% were feeling down. Student, teachers were saying they were either sleeping too much or too little, eating too much or too little, and not having the same kind of interest in daily activities. So, you know, that's something to be very mindful for when we're looking at supports for teachers. And finally, another positive was that 47% of the teachers said that they would be willing to participate in summer professional development for fully online programs. So if we end up having a fully online program, there were a lot of teachers that said that they would be interested. So now I'm going to turn it to Julio and he will take you through the qualitative survey, qualitative responses on the teacher survey. And then we'll break for questions and then we'll go into the, the parent survey. We put out a parent survey near the beginning of distance learning. And then we have another survey that's just come back near the end of distance learning for parents to give both quantitative and qualitative responses. And so Julio will take you through that too. But first of all, I'd like to, you know, just indicate again that we had a lot of support. Our, our two interns that are working with us this summer worked all weekend on the qualitative stuff. And our friends from the University of Minnesota were quite helpful. It's all yours, Julio.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, and everyone else on this board call. As Dave mentioned, I will be presenting the qualitative results that were compiled by some wonderful folks from the University of Minnesota. That's Dr. Shaver and Lana Peterson, that have been working with the Computer Science Education Team, as well as some of the folks that Dave mentioned from Arielle, Rick Lamb, and Chin Chow. In total, we had 197 elementary teachers, 89 middle school teachers, and 103 high school teachers responded, responding to the survey specifically to four questions, which we're kind of focusing on these results right now. First, what was working well for the teachers during distance learning and what was not working well? And additionally, we asked them what was working for their students and what was not working from their students and from their perspective. The data will be displayed by site levels. So as you can tell, we're going to start with reported data from the elementary teachers on what worked well for them during distance learning. The top three, the top three themes that you can see from the teachers dealt with technology support from the school and the district. They felt very supported through their questions about technology from both the school and the district. Teachers also reported that professional development and teamwork were supportive. And school and district communication were great. On the other hand, they reported what didn't work well for them, and that included ineffective or lack of communication from both parents and students. And that's over 55% of the teachers who responded to that. They also had difficulties with lesson planning, instruction, and assessment. Students showing low engagement, as well as teachers stating that there was too much workload to implement distance learning in such a period of time. For middle school teachers, they shared that the content delivery was working well for them during distance learning, as well as the flexibility for both their own work and their students' work, as well as the professional development opportunities that were available. What didn't work for these teachers was the lack of contact between students and themselves, and also guiding students through collaboration in meetings. The lack of accountability for the students' work. And again, student engagement, trying to attempt to engage their non-participating students. For high school teachers, course teaching and teacher collaboration and communications were the top things shared, as well as teacher technology efficiency, where teachers rose to the occasion by being prepared for remote teaching and their willingness to learn. On the other hand, high school teachers struggled with student engagement and student and parent communication. They also struggled with course design and delivery, as well as some equity issues, where especially dealing with language and technology access barriers that they saw at the forefront, especially when trying to communicate with the families. As presented before, we also asked teachers to give their perspective on what aspects of distance learning are working and not working well for their students. For elementary students, teachers reported that Google Meets and other technology apps worked well, although these accounted for one out of four for Google Meet and one out of five teachers for the other apps. Communication and the lessons plan. Uh, communication, the lessons plan, instruction and assessment also worked well. Again, only one out of four teachers reported that. So just keep in mind, keep that in mind. Um, elementary teachers also reported there was inefficient interaction between them and their students. And that students were struggling to complete their work. And that there was insufficient student support from families. Half of the middle school teachers who participated in the survey reported that students were thriving because distance learning provided them with an independent and flexible schedule and work environment. A third of the teachers reported the content delivery was working well for their students. And eighteen percent reported that students had access to teachers and that was working for their students. On the other hand, uh, similarly to what was not working for teachers, um, lack of accountability was reported by a little more than half of the teachers, including lack of engagement. Uh, asynchronous instruction did not seem to be working well for students. And twenty-one percent reported that students were having issues at home. High school teachers, similarly to the middle school teachers, pointed out that flexibility of distance learning was working well for their students. Seventeen percent also noted the students', um, access to devices and wifi worked well for them. And about seventeen percent noted improvement in student engagement. However, thirty-five percent of high school teachers noted that engagement was not working well for their students, especially lack of motivation and a lack of routine. The workload seemed to be set, the second issue brought out by twenty-two percent of the high school teachers with some students having too much work and some having too little work. And this seemed to vary with those having to balance schoolwork responsibilities at home. Lastly, uh, too many technology platforms seem to be an issue for students to work through. This was also apparent in the parent guardian survey quality results, uh, qualitative results that will, that will be forthcoming as the University of Minnesota and the research evaluation assessment teams are analyzing that data as we speak, uh, which it also includes the Bloomington, uh, Public School Student Survey qualitative results.
So, um, we'd like to take questions about the, um, staff, um, survey of distance learning before Julio goes through the, the family survey. If there are any questions.
Any questions? Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, so first of all, doctors, thank you very much and congratulations to our newest doctor, Dr. Julio. Um, I know you, you busted your butt to get it done and it's always great to have another, uh, doctor on the team.
Thank you for that.
Oh, and my question is, um, I don't know if you guys have any baseline information that could, you can, you can kind of compare the two. Cause I'm wondering if the problems that we're having with engagement and timely work completion, if those were kind of the same before we went to distance learning or if this is like a huge increase that we're seeing. Uh, I just don't know if you were able to find any, any data that could answer any of that, those questions.
Well, we had several questions that asked the staff to compare, uh, distance learning to, uh, regular instruction, uh, bef- before COVID nineteen. And it, it did appear that the, uh, the extra, uh, stress, the extra, uh, workload and, uh, you know, feelings of anxiety were all things that, uh, were apparent during distance learning that, that weren't as apparent beforehand.
Okay. Yeah, I know it's kind of hard to find the, the answer to that, but it's just.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't, we hadn't done this particular survey in the past, uh, because it focused on distance learning.
Okay, thank you.
Maya?
Oh, I was just thinking that I, I was, um, thinking it looked good that the majority of teachers thought that it was just the right amount of work. But I'm concerned because they, is it correct that they have not been teaching every subject yet on distance learning? So distance learning with spring did not include, um, social studies, science and health, for example?
Uh, for the high school teachers, I think that's, uh, correct, that it was a little bit less load. Um, and Julio, did, did you think that the, uh, feeling of being overworked was more prevalent among the, um, elementary teachers?
Um, I think it was pretty, you saw that across all three sites.
Okay.
It, it was the amount of, not necessarily the amount of work that they needed to put into distance learning, but prepping. Um, and during the prep time taken away from what they could be doing instructing time. Uh, and also a, a lot of the teachers who mentioned that, they also had kids in their homes or family members that they were looking after that also took away from it. So it was almost a battle between, um, uh, putting together these materials for students and also try dealing with their family needs.
Yeah, I'm glad we didn't overwhelm them, that they weren't, uh, overwhelmed for the spring when they had so little time to prepare for that.
Uh, we seem to be having a, an echo issue. I don't know if anybody else is, is hearing it. And I don't know, I see that we're, um, in the, in the presenting screen. So I don't know, there's a, a document that we need to close there or a window or a, or the stuff presenting. Yeah, thank you. Some technical issues. Uh, thanks. Any other questions? Dawn?
I, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to, uh, thank John and the technology team. Uh, as you can see, um, everybody said they, or the majority of people said they were well supported. And you know, it's not just the teachers, it's all of us too. So, um, I just wanted to thank them for doing such a great job on the technology side through all of this.
Tom?
Yeah, I guess this question would probably be for, uh, Jenna or Les. Um, so we're taking this information and we're seeing that we're having issues with engagement. Um, I don't know if you guys feel confident that when we start up in the fall, since it's going to be a likelihood that we're going to be having some type of either hybrid or stay-at-home model that we would be able to address, make changes to address this engagement to hopefully improve upon that? I don't know if either of you could touch on that?
Uh, that's, uh, a very good observation. I, I think, um, uh, Julio and I were asked to think about, um, areas that the board might want to set goals, uh, related to the survey information. And the number one area that we thought we could all work on was the engagement. And so whatever model that we come up with to see that we have students that are motivated, that are getting enough support and that, uh, um, the issues that, that were raised by, by teachers and you're going to hear s- some similar issues by parents, um, can be addressed so that we have, uh, higher quality and quantity of engagement.
One member, Ben? I'd like to respond to that. Learning curve, teachers have more time to prepare. We're very hopeful that there's going to be more improved engagement this fall.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn?
I sort of say, it was interesting that one of the statements or comments was that the same students that aren't engaged in the classroom and the same students that weren't engaged in online that they were drawing a, uh, com- a comparison or whatever to that. And I thought, well, if we could find a way.
From the online engagement. But I think that, that general worry that the gaps are getting bigger because the kids that were engaged and were being successful in their schoolwork before COVID nineteen now are taking off, whereas the other students are actually losing ground. And so we're all quite worried about how big the gaps are going to be when we do our assessments in the fall.
Other comments, questions?
Well.
Maya?
Just speaking of assessments, I mean, maybe that's not something to answer right now, but I'm curious how that's going to look online too.
Um, if, if we end up with a fully online with, where there's no, uh, face-to-face interaction with teachers, we're going to have to postpone the assessments. The assessments we use aren't standardized for at home with parents being the proctors. So we're planning for in-school, hoping for a hybrid, uh, model where we could have assessments in the classroom, but we've got a lot of time before we reach that point. Uh, if, if you'd like Chair Corman, we could move on to the parent survey results. Uh, Julio has both quantitative and qualitative results from the first check-in that we did with parents. And then we asked the same questions at the end of school and we'll be putting that together, uh, in a short period of time.
Yeah, Dr. David, just have a, a quick question and I can't so relate to many of the comments that were given by, by teachers. Um, but when you, um, when you asked the teachers about this engagement part of the survey, did they, um, give us specific information about who their students were, the demographics of the kids that, uh, were not as engaged? And, um, and the reasons that they got from their students of why they were possibly unable to stay engaged?
Julio, do you want to take that one?
Uh, sure. So specifically, we did not, uh, most of the questions that were, uh, returned in the qualitative, um, responses were pretty much what teachers were, uh, offering on their own, on their own observations. So we do not have that kind of information. Um, what would be nice though is to follow up maybe with teachers to see if they can give us some additional information specifically to those, um, groups that we might want to look into.
Right. Thank you. Okay, we can move to the next one.
One second. Great. Um, so, uh, this is the listen, distance learning survey that we, that was given out to parents and guardians. This was sent out, uh, on April twenty-sixth and the la- and we closed it on May fifth. Um, in total, uh, two thousand six hundred and seventy-five parents and guardians responded to the survey. Uh, pre-K only household only accounted for about forty of those families, meaning that there were families who had kids with pre-K, but also in, uh, elementary or middle or high school. Uh, these number of parents and guardians represents approximately forty-five percent of all the students in Bloomington Public Schools. That's about four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine students. About seventy-one percent of those, uh, parents and guardians identified as white, eight percent identified as Hispanic Latino, uh, seven percent preferred not to enter, uh, six percent black African, five percent Asian, two percent identified as two or more, one percent Native American and one percent did not provide an answer. Uh, and two families identified as Pacific Islanders. Uh, the majority reported that their children did not receive free and reduced lunch, uh, with sixteen point four percent receiving, uh, free and reduced lunch. Here are some comments, uh, that uh, found about their feelings of distance learning. I'll give you a couple of, uh, minutes to kind of read through them. Should not equate to lowered expectations from either the staff or students. Um, however, families also shared many positive comments regarding distance learning. One specific one said, "Both of my children light up every time when they are their teacher, when they hear their teachers' voices." They really love and miss their teachers and it has been special as a parent to see how dear teachers really are to children. They also share some positive feedback about the district. I am really grateful to Bloomington Public Schools fraternity for their hard work, mostly at this time. Uh, and as mentioned before, we are still working on the massive amount of qualitative data that we have. We'll be, we'll be showing similar results that we did for the teachers once we have them in. Regarding the qualit- qua- uh, quantitative results, only five families reported not having access to a computer or a tablet to do their, uh, their schoolwork. And only about twenty families either reported that their children did not have daily access to the internet or did not provide an answer. That is ninety-nine point two percent of families reported having daily access to the internet. Out of the twenty families without daily access to the internet or did not provide an answer, the majority were of Hispanic Latino background. But again, these numbers are really small, so just mainly focus on the number rather than the percentage. So we have about seventy-seven Hispanic Latino families, about four white, four black, African, uh, two Native Americans, two did not, uh, answer and two or more, uh, were one family who did not have or were unknown. When parents and guardians were asked about the amount of schoolwork their children are receiving from their teachers, almost two out of three parents and guardians stated that the amount of work was just the right amount. About fourteen percent stated that it was too little and sixteen percent stated that it was too much. And about two hundred and twelve families did not know. When asked about how much time per day their children spent on schoolwork during a week period, the amount varied between race and ethnicity groups, uh, from twenty-four percent of Native Americans to forty-six percent of white families reporting that their children spent four or more hours during schoolwork per day. And everybody's pretty much in high fifties or low sixties. Uh, for four hours or more. Regarding technology issues, uh, two out of three families reported that their children encountered some obstacles with technology. So maybe yes, one time, yes, a few times, or yes, many times. Out of these families, only forty-three percent reached out to Bloomington Public Schools for help with these difficulties. And three out of four who did reach out stated that their technical difficulties, difficulties were addressed satisfactorily. Seventy-seven percent of families agreed or strongly agreed that teachers provided them with clear directions for their children's distance learning work. Twenty-two percent of families agreed or strongly agreed that their children were not engaging in schoolwork, even though they were trying to motivate them. Please remember this number for later. One out of four parents. Uh, the other three questions, posse families and white families didn't differ significantly. Difference of two percent, difference of about three percent, difference of about four percent, uh, with families being a little bit more overwhelmed, posse families. Regarding additional supports, eighty-six percent of families did not need any additional support with helping without children with distance learning. Out of those who did report needing additional. Out of those who did report needing additional support, only 27%. Reported that they knew how to request additional support. That means that seven out of 10 families that reported needing additional support did not know. Or kind of knew how to request distance learning support. Remember this number two. For those reporting needing additional support, the majority reported needing some support of social emotional. Learning. Navigating online educational tools. Enrichment reading materials. Educational app recommendations and others. Additionally, 6% of families. Requested more information about meal programs. That is, close to 100 families with this request who provided contact information. When we asked families to what extent do these statements apply to them during the week? 90%. Of families felt little, mostly or very calm and relaxed with 10% not being calm and relaxed at all. One out of four families reported feeling mostly. Or very nervous when they thought about current circumstances. 5%. Reported feeling very stressed about leaving their house. 9% reported being very or mostly worried about their health. Whereas 24%, that's one out of four families reported being very or mostly worried about the health of their family members. With this information, we were able to make a list of needs for those families who reported that needed or requested. And provided contact information. In short, all families who requested. More information about meal programs were contacted. 106 out of 117 families were contacted regarding support with navigating online tools and educational app recommendations. Approximately 91% of them. Out of 17 families who requested technology support, five were contacted. The rest is unknown by REA and they're still pending. For families who requested social emotional learning resources. An SEL resource list was created. And it was shared with all. Approximately 51 out of 146 families have been contacting regarding mental health support thus far. And lastly, all families who requested online reading materials. Were contacted by Bloomington Public School staff. As far as recommendations from REA, whoops. My apologies. A large number of families, approximately 73% that were looking for additional support. Did not know or somewhat knew how to request additional support. So there seems to be an area that we need to sort of target. How do we make this additional support accessible to folks who are looking for it? Student engagement also seems to be a theme across not only families but teachers worries. They both state that they're doing their best to engage their students' schoolwork, but seem to come a bit short. At this point now, we'll open up for questions and I'll bring it back to non-presenting.
Okay, well, members, are there any questions? Jim, you can start.
Thank you. Yeah, this having read this a little bit before, but not all of the information. This is really. Stresses the. Experienced teachers and students who have done have done distance learning before. Versus the newness of the families and teachers that are just have just experienced it now this time. We're hoping through the these. I'm hoping through the technology and teaching and Annie Koubas's department as well as John Weisers that. They will be more comfortable now that they have a good schedule and a good structure at each of the. Levels, elementary, middle school and social. That some of these problems can be avoided. There's always going to be some disengagement and some. Extra engagement and families feeling frustrated and so forth. As I mentioned before, and I'm sure Nellie's aware of it too, my. Daughter who is is a middle school teacher. And has three children at home that each had their own lessons that they had to deal with. Was quite a challenge for her to deal with all of her students as well as. Support the kids from doing it. Luckily, she grabbed a couple of older kids in the neighborhood to help. Do some tutoring and and encouragement to do it. And we're going to have to resort to all kinds of those things to in order to succeed and to get through. I'm just glad Bloomington is so far ahead of the curve in doing a lot of this or being aware. Of all of these things that we need to do. And we're going to have to call on, as I mentioned before, grandparents, friends. Aunts, uncles, whoever it is that can help out at home in order to encourage the kids. That this is what they need to do because people are going to go back to work or people are just going to be. Demoralized, you know, and depressed that they can't really.
Absolutely. And just to kind of emphasize what you were saying. There the work, all this information is being utilized by all departments. Not just the quantitative, but the qualitative as soon as it comes through. And one of the requests that was made was that if we can take this family information and and divide it up into. Into groups of ethnic and racial so that they can look at those disparities and to see what can we focus in just kind of you mentioned. The focusing in on the needs and what what can we do better?
Totally agree with that. Beth?
I had two big concerns when I read this and that was. How many did not know how to find resources? Or kind of knew? And I think when you are in a desperate situation and you're feeling overwhelmed. As many of the families were, and I I heard this from families in my neighborhood. Who are very together families. And yet they were feeling overwhelmed. But that we have to have more in place. For example. I remember when I went on the the old website and they had, you know, parental help. And it took me to the Office of Educational Equity, but there was nothing for Caucasian parents. And I felt like, so where do I go or where do those parents go? And then also when it was talked about how many resources have been given regarding social emotional learning resources. It's a resource list, but is what is that list? You know, is that is that a list of who can help them with that? Or is it a list in their language so that they can draw from that? Is it websites they can go to? Sometimes people need more than a piece of paper. They actually need flesh and blood to be there. To be able to help them pick up the pieces. I've seen moms that are just maxed out and in tears. And and so I'm wondering, what do we do besides just throw information at people?
Tom, you raise your hand?
Oh, yes. Well, as a as a parent of two kids in Bloomington, I took the survey and I was one of the minority there that said that there definitely was not enough work. I mean, my my sixth grade daughter was pretty much done with school by the time I woke up in the morning and my son was pretty much done before lunch. But I I am also mindful that not everyone's in the same situation and there's a lot of people that were struggling. So I'm wondering if we're going into the fall and we're going to have to do distance learning part two or 2.0, how are we able going to be able to? Individualize this where my kids' needs are getting met, but also the kids that are overwhelmed, how their needs are getting met. I don't know if anyone here can can speak to that at all.
Yeah, I could I can try Director Bennett. So I I'll be sharing in a little bit in the next presentation. More information about our safe and supportive schools work. And part of that process is using design thinking, which is really working with our stakeholders and trying to empathize with them. What is it they need and want? Which I see as, you know, these first two presentations that that we've had here tonight is really what is it our stakeholders are looking for? But the next step of the process is plan and try things out and then and then iterate, right? And and change as we go and as as needed. And so. You know, I see that as being a really integral part of how we move forward in the fall. We've done things one way in the spring. Let's take that feedback. Let's figure out how we can do things differently. And likely no one of us has a really great answer to your specific situation, for example, that you brought up. But I do have a lot of faith in our teachers and our leaders, our site, our site leaders, our building leaders, our site leadership teams. That they can come up with some solutions around some of those pieces as well. So I feel like right now the important part is to have that data so that we can start thinking more forwardly about what we're going to do next.
Heather?
I can never get unmuted when I need to. Okay, so I it's my understanding there you had you did this survey later in the year. Because you mentioned this one was done April, end of April, beginning of May. Did I hear right that there was another one done?
That's correct. So the other one that's out in the field right now should be closed in the next two days.
Are they the same questions or are they different questions?
They're primarily the same questions, just sort of appropriately to taking the 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 time difference. So saying, hey, about five, six weeks ago, we sent out the survey. What are your thoughts now?
Okay, so we could potentially see some themes come out. From parents that because the end of August, early April, I think we were still, we had only done distance learning four or five weeks. So by I'm I'm excited to see if there's any significant changes or if it was the same themes in April as it was at the end of May. So I'm looking forward to that. I I want to empathize with the parents, I you know, on the one where you had all the different quotes. The families that wanted school to end early. That was me right there. This was very long. And challenging in our home. And I think my perspective is that it fundamentally fundamentally changed. The relationship between parent and child. Because my children would, after a couple of days, they'd see me walking towards them and they'd be like, I'm done, I'm done. Don't ask me if I'm done with my assignment. I'm done. So like, I couldn't be their parent supporting their work at home. I was now this teacher coming to check on, I don't know how to describe that well, but. It really, I think, changed relationships at home. So I don't know how we. Address that or. Take that into account when we're working with parents and their students if we do have some form of distance learning in the future.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about that?
If there aren't any other questions. This really leads into the presentation that Jenna's going to make. But the second major theme other than. The engagement of students was really the supports for social emotional learning. So so that really leads in well to Jenna's presentation. And we thank you all for your great questions.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Heistack. And I also wanted to ask you on regards to the surveys, are those also going to students?
Yes, Julio, do you want to talk about the student surveys a little bit?
Absolutely. So the student surveys are closed already. They were asked questions about distance learning course. So we have fifth graders, eighth graders, ninth graders, 11 and 12 graders. Will be looking for both quantitative and qualitative information. So once the qualitative results are done, I think one of the key areas that we want to focus on is having some type of triangulation between. Parents, teachers and students to see what are the common themes that we see, either around things that are working well or things that are not working well. So that we can kind of have a really good idea of where we can move through synergistically.
That's great. Yes, thank you. But it seemed like you had another question there? No, okay. Well, I just want to say thank you, both of you for that awesome presentation, a lot of good information and all the work you've done around it. Really appreciate it. It's it's very helpful. Meaningful information that will help us as we receive the the fall or students in the fall. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going to move to the presentation that Dr. Jenna Mitchler has for us today. And that one is the Safe and Supported Schools, our second session with our Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you so much, Chair Corman. So I will admit I'm having a little bit of trouble tonight for the first time. With some of my tech pieces. So I'm hopeful here that I'll be sharing my slides. If somebody could just. If somebody could let me know, can you see my slides verbally so that I could hear you?
We can see it, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay, and I'm going to hope that I don't freeze up. That has been the problem a little bit here tonight. So first of all, thank you for this opportunity to talk again about safe and supportive schools. We talked about this a little bit at our school board meeting on Monday. And that was just a short session, just an overview sort of of the work that's happened with safe and supportive schools this past year, which was. Really a lot of taking stock of what we have in place right now and starting to think about what we need to do in the future. Ironically, we probably the way we started things in the fall with figuring out what we needed to put in place has shifted quite dramatically over the last couple of months. As we now have some really different and unique needs, but that's all important for us to consider here here tonight. So I have a couple of objectives for us with this session. The purpose is first to review the different focus areas for safe and supportive schools. So again, these are things that I shared with you at our last meeting at the school board meeting, but I wanted to talk a little bit more in detail about those three focus areas tonight. And then the second purpose of this presentation would be to discuss the school board leadership. And so as you think through. Your roles as school board members. It might be helpful to think about what what responsibility you might have or might take with some of this work around safe and supportive schools as we move forward. You know, I heard a lot of really great questions, both tonight so far and during the school board meeting on Monday of last week. Questions just about about fall planning and what we're going to do when we get back to school in the fall, what things will look like, what we're considering. And so that that engagement is really makes me feel quite optimistic. And so I'm excited to talk through what what role the school board might take with some of the safe and supportive schools planning. And then the last item on your agenda tonight is for you all to discuss your your goals as a board for next year. And so I might just recommend a couple of priorities for you all with regard to safe and supportive schools that you could. Consider taking up when you start to discuss your goals for for next year. So I just want to start with our mission statement. Of course, it's really great for us all to be grounded in our mission here in Bloomington Public Schools. But we all know that we are working hard to develop in all of our learners, the ability to thrive. In a rapidly, really rapidly lately, right, changing world. And so what's underlined here is all of our learners. Because the focus with safe and supportive schools is that we have a safe and supportive school system for everyone. And that truly means all of our students and all of our staff and all of our community and families as we try to support their students through their their learning journey. We're all familiar, I'm sure, with our our vision here in the district, our pathways to career and college. But keeping in mind that as we build out the most safe and supportive school system possible. What we're really trying to do here is help students achieve their goals to get to their various milestones. Sometimes called the the subway stops here at the bottom of this map. So how can we really make sure that we have students coming into preschool, for example, ready to ready to learn and engage in their learning there? All the way through career and college ready? How can we ensure that they are ready for that next chapter? Through creating a safe and supportive school system? At the meeting last week on Monday, I mentioned that there were three key areas for safe and supportive schools that have surfaced over this past year. So before I go into detail about the three, I want to just mention again a little bit about the process. So I had mentioned when Director Bennett asked a question earlier around engagement. and how we can meet the personalized needs of, for example, his learners and his household. And I mentioned we use a design thinking process that starts with empathy. So we did start with looking at a lot of stakeholder feedback this past fall. We can think back all the way, feel so long ago now. But we collected lots of data through surveys that were sent out at the building level. We looked at some of our student survey data, the Bloomington data that had come in from the previous spring. We looked at data from our staff with regard to our PLCs, PLC facilitators. And through sifting through all of that data, we were able to identify three key themes. And the first of those three is the climate of care. So we really recognized that we needed and we do need in Bloomington Public Schools to make sure all of our students, staff, and families really feel cared about. As we sifted through the data that we had identified as being a part of this theme, a climate of care, we also noticed four specific areas that related to this. So the first is, we want to make sure we have mental, physical, and social and emotional health supports for our students, families, and staff. We want to make sure that we have spaces that foster that sense of belonging and nurturing for, again, all of those stakeholders, students, staff, and community, families. We want to make sure that we are truly respecting and caring for all that results in positive relationships and positive behaviors within our schools. And make sure that we are communicating with our stakeholders in a way that ensures equitable access, which reminds me of an earlier conversation we were having as we looked through some of that survey data around making sure our families have information about where to go, right? Or know where to go to get information, to your point before Director BB. So that's the first of the three key themes is that climate of care. The second has been identified as tailored instruction. And maybe Director Bennett, this gets at a little bit more of what you were saying is we need to have learning opportunities that really are personalized for students, staff, with regard to professional development, of course, for staff, and then community, if we're sharing information or working with community and families to help them understand and navigate our school system. Universal design is mentioned in this first item. And my hunch is that this surfaced in our data because we've been doing a lot of work around universal design, especially within our special education department and classes. So universal design being the idea that all students, regardless of need, deserve access. And so as we think through, for example, a student who maybe has been identified for needing supports around emotional and behavioral as a category of special education service, we can make sure that we're providing them with the same access to what they need for their learning as a student who maybe has not been identified with that need. So that's what we're talking about when we say universal design. Really key to this work is that we have tiers of support that provide differentiation and allow us to customize the instruction for students. So if this is a new idea to you, tiers of instruction or tiers of support and viewing audience, the idea here is that we provide a tier one, so something for all students, regardless of who they are, where they come to us from. And that there are always going to be some students that need a little bit something in addition. And so that would be tier two, something on top of, an extra scoop of something for their, to meet their needs. And this could be on the end of the spectrum where students are needing enrichment. Or it could also be students who are needing some sort of intervention to help supplement their learning. And then we also have a third tier, which would be few students who need, in addition to tier two, something else. So that's what we're talking about when we talk about tiers of support. And then thirdly, being responsive to strengths, needs, interests, and aspirations of all learners, which may sound familiar when you think about our personal growth plans, for example, in our district, trying to think through what we have in place and how we can strengthen and continue and grow in those areas. The third and final area that was identified this last year through our work with engaging with stakeholders was meaningful engagement. Again, something that's come up over and over already tonight and that we've seen in our data as we were having the last two presentations. So within this area, we really want to make sure that we are valuing, recognizing, and elevating the assets that each person brings to our community. So one really good example of this, I think, might be if you think about language. At times, it may seem to some that language is a challenge or a barrier, and it truly is for navigating systems, particularly when the systems are built around the English language. But in so many ways, language can be an asset too, especially if the home language is not English. And so identifying ways that we can elevate that as an asset for our students and families. Trying to ensure connections for all learners to and within their community, be this maybe through service learning projects, through volunteering, and other ways, partnerships. And then lastly, opportunities for collaborative problem solving and identification of problems and then solving them together. Gets back to the empathize piece of the design thinking, making sure we're really hearing from our stakeholders. So those again are the three key components of safe and supportive schools that have surfaced this last year as we've looked through the data. What I've done then is I've taken the five areas of school board leadership that come to us from the Minnesota School Board Association, MSBA. And I've taken a little bit of a deeper dive in the next couple of slides into a couple of these areas. So MSBA identifies these five as what they call standards for school board leadership. And you might imagine coming from learning and teaching in my past life and being a teacher myself who had worked with curriculum review, I saw the word standard and thought, oh, this sounds like curriculum and curriculum review to me. So under each one of these standards, MSBA also provides benchmarks, which is much like academic standards and academic benchmarks. So what I've done here is a similar process to what we would have done during curriculum review, which is identify a couple of key standards that may be priorities for us moving forward. And the three that I've identified with regard to our safe and supportive schools work are vision, accountability, and advocacy and communication is the term that's used for MSBA, but I'm calling it engagement here. And that's a conversation that Rick Kaufman, Dr. Heistert, and Dr. Sazhar had, we all had together. And we had said engagement really feels like the right word there to be using. So those surfaced as maybe some areas to focus on in the future with regard to school board leadership. Now, we don't need to read through all of these benchmarks, but I did want to have them listed in the slides so that you all could see what the benchmarks are under vision. So you'll see things that look familiar to you, right? Like looking at focused and attainable measurable goals around student achievement, developing a strategic plan, regularly monitoring that plan and evaluating progress, ensuring that our belief statements, our mission, our vision, our goals and objectives are all reflected in our policies, our budget planning, our implementation efforts, and supported throughout the district. And then lastly, for vision that we communicate the strategic plan and progress to the community. So in looking over these benchmarks, I took the liberty of picking one that I thought might be helpful to focus on for safe and supportive schools work. And that one that I selected was D. And I'll tell you a little bit more about why. So D again just says that with regard to school board leadership, the role of school board is to ensure that the school district belief statements, mission, vision, statement, goals, objectives, are all reflected in the policies mirrored in budget planning and implementation efforts and supported district-wide. So one thing you might focus on as a board, if you were so to choose this as a priority, would be thinking through how Bloomington Public Schools, Safe and Supportive Schools, plan. And especially this really important piece of it, which is our equity work, cultural proficiency, are reflected in the school board policies, the budget planning, the implementation efforts, and supported throughout the district. If you were to write a goal in this area, I think it would probably be very helpful to specifically call out the piece of our plan around this cultural proficiency work, which is the name of our framework and our tools that we're bringing into place here in Bloomington Public Schools. And I just wanted to, as we're thinking about this, I wanted to reference an area from a book, Cultural Proficiency, that we'll be using to help do some of our work here in the district together. But there's a line in the middle of the first version of the book that talks about culturally proficient schools. And within a culturally proficient school system, each participant has a definite role to play. The roles may overlap at times, but they retain distinctive and characteristic. And there's a breakdown of the different roles for school leadership. School board's role within leadership within this cultural proficiency work is stated as being sure to review and change policies as the student population changes and to maintain a culturally proficient environment. It also lists a school board priority and role with culturally proficient school systems is to establish policies from a culturally proficient perspective. So as we think about that, I think being sure to call out cultural proficiency in your goals might be something that helps us prioritize it at the district level then and then also at our site level as well. The next area that I had mentioned is accountability. So remember I said three. Vision is the first, accountability is the second. So again, here there's two benchmarks, recognizing the duty to the board itself, the district itself, the community, and determining whether authority is delegated to the super, determining how authority is delegated to the superintendent, evaluating the superintendent's performance using student achievement data or other indicators, which is key here, when available, as the basis for assessing progress towards our school district goals and compliance with policies and laws. And then recognizing the distinction between monitoring data and management data, knowing that there's lots of different types of data we're using in our district. But there's some data that if we report it to the school board at the school board level, as I had mentioned, it becomes a priority for the board, and that's obvious. So then becomes a priority for the district and priorities for the sites as well. So with regard to this particular standard, the benchmark that I had chosen to call out here as it relates to safe and supportive schools was C. I had mentioned using data, that student achievement data, and other indicators. And so what I might recommend here, if the board were interested in doing so, is that you think through perhaps your desire to see other indicators of student success in our district. And so some of those things might include, for example, attendance. I know that's a little bit different right now than it looks typically during our traditional schooling, the way it's been done. But looking at attendance over time might be helpful for us in knowing how engaged students perhaps feel or how welcome they feel in the schools. Another item you might consider looking at with regard to data under other indicators here could be our student survey results. So every three years, the district gives a student survey. But in the in-between years, we also give a Bloomington survey to our students that have some of the same items. And that was something that you heard Dr. Sazhar mention today during his presentation as well, and Dr. Heistert. So these could be some of the data points that we take up and look at with you as a school board so that we again see these priorities reflected at the board level, which would then mean they'd be reflected at the district level and then at the site level as well. I just want to add that if we were to add other indicators like these as something that school board takes up and starts to look at on a regular basis, we might see them reflected in our World's Best Workforce Report, for example. And we might also see them reflected, although you may not see them at the board level as much, but in the site plans. So each site in our district creates a plan at the start of the year for how they want to address some of their needs based on their data. And so we might see them as, in the past, they've taken up data around MCAs and MAP scores. They might also then begin to look at some of the data around the student survey, for example, and say, engagement's important to us. Let's think through a plan of how we can achieve higher engagement at our site as well. So that's for accountability. The third and final standard that I had mentioned was advocacy and engagement. So again, multiple benchmarks here focusing on community-wide concerns and values that support equity and student achievement, further developing communication strategies that build trust between the board and all of the other stakeholders, utilizing community relations strategy that supports the flow of information, engaging and building relationships with the public and private stakeholders, and advocating on multiple levels. So with regard to this standard around advocacy and engagement, I might surface A, which is focus on community-wide concerns, values, and I've highlighted and underlined here, needs that best support equity and student achievement. So we've seen a lot of needs just through the survey data that we looked at tonight. But some of the things we might think about are, how might we continue to gather this data from our stakeholders? How might we ensure that we continue to hear from them? Not just now during the summer as we're building out our thinking for the fall, but on a continuous basis, even perhaps when school goes back to somewhat of what we might call normal? How can we continue to hear from our stakeholders regularly? And then the last piece of this that I'll mention is just, as you're starting to think about your goals for next year, I think it would be really helpful if we could continue our journey together around cultural proficiency. And so perhaps you might take up a goal that's something around taking part in professional development regarding our equity and access work, which, as I said, is a foundation to our safe and supportive schools plan. So that's what I have for you tonight. I am going to try to stop presenting and see if I can still stay in the meeting without freezing up. And then I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, questions, comments? Heather.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mitchler, for that fantastic information. I, as I've mentioned in many meetings, and you guys will learn about me over time, I'm very data-driven, so I like when we have examples of evidence-based or data-based decision-making. So I really appreciate that you mentioned that in there. One of my questions is, isn't attendance already a factor in our World's Best Workforce? Because I thought that when the Department of Education added some non-academic benchmark or something, is that something that we already evaluate?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question. So the North Star Report, which is something that you can see reflected on MDE's website, does report out on some of the things that I mentioned. So they have student survey data there, they have the attendance data, discipline data. So some of these other pieces that I'm suggesting we maybe add to our rotation in terms of the data we're reviewing. The difference is, although they appear on MDE's site as part of our district's report card, as it's called, it's not always something that we report on in our World's Best Workforce goals. And part of the trickle-down effect here would be that if we were to include this as part of our World's Best Workforce Plan, these Safe and Supportive Schools metrics, we would also be seeing them probably then listed on some of our site plans. So for example, if we know that the school board's going to be looking at student survey data and that it's valuable to the school board, then we would also see the principals and their building leadership teams picking up something around that data and making it a priority for their plan for the coming school year as well.
Okay. I have a lot to say about this, but I don't want to get too far in the weeds. And I also don't know how much of this is going to be later in goals conversation. So I'm going to hold on to some stuff, but I'll probably ask you some more questions later.
Welcome back. Jim?
Hi, yeah, thanks, Jenna, for bringing this to us. As you all know, and I've referenced this before, this is a heavy reading book, Tom. You ought to take it when the kids are getting too much free time. Say, hey, come here, kids, look at this chapter. But I've already identified several goals from the presentations now, and I know we're going to be talking about them. But as we go through this, it's just such a heavy issues. And so I just wanted to say, this is really good and helpful and for you to outline it like this. So, because the book has so many different things and they're always constantly referring to other districts and what they've done and the various tools that are in use. So this is going to be good as we continue to talk about our goals for the next year.
Maya.
Hi, yes, thank you. I just, I think during this period of uprising for, you know, amid, we have an uprising of racial justice and COVID pandemic. We have a lot of things going on, and this is a really good time, a really good time to be addressing this. I'm just wondering about when you spoke of a goal to have connections with the community about collecting, you know, having, collecting community recommendations for a possible outreach effort? Like what do we want our community to look like? And having some kind of collaborative process in that way? Is that something we could discuss?
Yeah, so I, when I originally was talking through this particular recommendation, I was working with Rick Kaufman. And I imagine he may have some suggestions or ideas around this as well. But, you know, I think the key things I go back to are what policies can we look at as a school board to try to see where we can work this into policy where it's appropriate? And then how can we, how can we ensure that what we make as a priority for the school board? Or I shouldn't say how, it's more a matter of if we make it a priority for the school, as a school board, if you make it a priority to collect this feedback, then, you know, we'll continue to have some reports as we, you know, had tonight, which I think can be just really, really helpful and inform some of the decision-making.
Beth?
Yeah. Dr. Mitchler spent a lot of time with me today, and we discussed some of these things. And it, it helped me to realize that when we get data information, that we look at it and we say, okay, now what? And with what information we get, that actually forces us to be accountable for that information. You know, so we see that, oh, it was very difficult for some of these parents to know what to do. Okay, so what do we do with that? We have to come up with a solution. And that has to be something not just for one site, but for every site. And so maybe we start looking at, hmm, how do we make those things available? What kind of policy do we have about getting the information out to the parents to know how to access the help that they are going to need? And so I guess I'm looking forward to developing those goals with the team and what we see by the information we've received in these reports just recently, and also looking back at the most recent World's Best Workforce as well, and taking those data points and putting them together so that we can have a better picture of where we need to head in our board goals.
Anybody else? Tom?
Yes, well, thank you, Jenna, for this. And I agree with what you're saying about looking at things with cultural efficiency. And I've really enjoyed our, our professional developments here and our equity work and our session with Dr. Trudy. And I think we've got the information. So now it's kind of like, okay, now what are our action steps going to be? And I'm hoping that our direction and our goals reflect action in that area of equity. So we're looking at policies. I mean, I know we always have a goal of review 20 policies, but I would, I was already thinking we should have a goal where we're, so we would look for cultural bias or any bias in our goals, or not in our goals, in our, in our policies. But then also look at our, our strategic plan. I mean, I don't know how long it's been since we reviewed that, but is that something that we should look at through a equity lens? And if we need to make adjustments to that and in our hiring practices? And, and just all those things that I think we need to kind of do an equity walk, if you will, throughout our whole district and look at specifically for any type of bias and see if what corrections we can make. And those are kind of where I think we need to be focusing some of our, our goals on. And then, you know, interaction with the community, I think we need to ask our, our, our parents and families, and especially those of color, about how they feel in this district. Do they feel that they're supported? Do they feel that there's any racism that exists in this district? So that we can get that information so that we can, again, take some action steps to move forward.
Yeah, I think that's, that's right on, Director Bennett. And, you know, you had mentioned a lot of the pieces under the, the vision with the benchmark that I had identified there. The other one is around the budgets, right? So if you're thinking through a culturally proficient lens, as you're starting to do the work around budgets too, that can be, that can make a big impact, right? And we know that that's something that's been kind of a big lift the last couple of years. And we'll be again engaging in some of that this year too.
That's a lot of work. And, you know, I think you're doing a great job leading us in that direction. So thank you for all your work that you've already done and all the hard work we're going to be tasking you with in the future.
Thank you for your engagement, really. Yeah, it's good.
Great. Maya?
And when Tom brought up Dr. Trudy, wasn't, didn't she say something too about that this was unusual to have a, a session with the school board? You know, they, they usually do district-wide, she does district-wide seminars. But I thought that was really special that, that we might be special in that way because of you having a workshop just for the school board on, on cultural proficiency. Yeah, so thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's important for, for the board to really understand it and appreciate it, right? For us to know that we can move forward with it. It's good.
Dawn?
I just wanted to thank you for your work on this. You know, I've been going to workshops on different kinds of tiers of support and universal design for probably 20 years already. So it's really nice to see, you know, some of this included. But I also feel like, you know, change has just been so long in some things. So I'm happy to see that maybe, you know, we can make some progress. Thank you.
Okay, someone else? No other comments? Okay, then it's my turn.
Well, thank you, Dr. Mitchler. This is, this is just a great study session like we haven't had in a long time. You know, we have received so much good and valuable information. And it's just a reflection of the great job that you all do. You know, all the initiatives you guys bring and all the hard work that you put into those and the vision that you have for what is best for our community and for our students. It's, this is, this is what we're seeing. And I'm very glad too to see that our school board is embracing, embracing those initiatives as well. You know, I'm glad to see that, that we, we seem to be, to be ready to, to take that leap that we've been waiting for, for several years, I'll say personally. And one question I have for you, Dr. Mitchler, is when it comes to working with our, with our staff, how do you envision the process of bringing this, this plan to our staff members? And how we're going to be developing that plan? I mean, when you think about how you're going to embed this into the, your workload, how do you think that looks like for them or may might look like?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And I think a really great opportunity for me to just say that I am so incredibly grateful for the partnership and the work that I've been able to, to do just in this first year in my role with Dina Wade-Ardley, who's our Director of Educational Equity. And so she has been a partner right alongside, you know, a lot of our district leaders for a long time and trying to think through this, this approach of inside out, right? How do we come to examine our own values and biases and beliefs? And so, you know, through my work with her and developing out our plan, we determined that we want to have three cohorts of training our staff in the district. And so there'll be a first initial cohort that will start their work in August. And this is about five schools, and it's the building principal from each building. If it's a secondary school, it's also their assistant principal or principals. And then it's their building leadership, some of their building leadership. So not necessarily their building leadership team, but a selection of, of leadership, of leaders from that building who can be a part of the cohort. So those folks will be fully trained in the framework, the four tools that the board has come to know a little bit better at that last PD session. And then the responsibility of that first cohort is to engage in some of the training of the second and third cohorts, which will then start over the next two to three years. And so at the end of our three-year implementation here, we'll have folks in every single building, at every site, who have had the full training and know the framework and the tools really well. I should also say, our Office of Educational Equity has the majority of their staff engaged during that first cohort too. And so we'll be doing a lot of work together with all of this as we move forward. The benefit to that is that we start out with a group of people who can really come to know it well and be champions of the work, and then help work with their, their peers, their colleagues, side by side, instead of having an outsider, so to speak, coming in, a consultant or something like that for three, three years working with our staff. This really will be building the capacity of some of our staff early on and then having them work with our staff over time. So thank you for that question. I will say, you know, I think, I think it will be valuable. I hear, I hear the board saying they're interested in, in doing this work, really interested in doing this work, which is great, and engaging over time. And so, you know, I think there's some really great ways, if we were to, to move forward, having some metrics that would be, we would use for accountability. And if we could continue our, our sessions with the, you know, as the board, I would be happy to work with you on some of those PD sessions moving forward. So I'm excited about the, I'm feeling optimistic about the path.
Yeah, and it definitely is a very important work that we, that you're bringing here in front of us. And I think like, like, as you mentioned before, because you included the role of the board in this presentation to, for all of my, my colleagues to pay really close attention to, to that specific area, to what is our role in all this? And moving forward as we continue to make progress through this plan, what is, what is exactly our role? And I also want to make sure that we, or that you pass that information to other staff members as well, that we're going to take these, this work very seriously. We have tried different approaches to the work that you're bringing now. And for many different reasons, you know, it takes a while to, to really kind of get into that type of relationship with one specific plan, right? And so not every plan is perfect. So you had to definitely have to kind of chop around until you find the, the right one. And this might be the right one. And it's a very, like, it looks like really well studied. And, and I think it's very important that, that we make sure, that you'll make sure that people know, that staff members know, that the board is going to take this very seriously. And part of that is that we have already taken that step into having professional development sessions ourselves, studying these ourselves. You know, we're going to be part of this plan, that you administrators are going to be part of this plan. And that there has to be an expectation. And I would like to hear what other, the other board members have to say about this. But I think it's important that we have an expectation that we're all working on this and we're working together. And, and that it's everyone, you know, from the very top to everyone else in the district. So it is, it is very important that, that, that we make sure that, that there is accountability there, that there's, there's been many times through the years when we see people working on their own, trying to create their own plans and idea. And I think we need to stick to that one that can help us work in collaboration with each other because we're thinking, we're, we're talking about the wellbeing of our kids. So, yes, Dawn?
Um, to add to what you're saying or a question for all of us to decide, we don't have to decide tonight, but just something I, I was thinking about. I would really think it would be beneficial if we could attend maybe to the schools that were assigned or somewhere, or figure out a way so that a board member could attend some of the training also in the building. Because it's a different conversation with just the seven of us than it is in that building. And I really think it would be beneficial for us to be part of. We don't need to go to all of them because I know some people are uncomfortable with us there. But it would be really beneficial for us to be able to go to at least one or two of those trainings in some of our buildings. I think it would also be beneficial to see that, that people also see that we're taking part of it and coming there and being part of the discussion there also. So I don't know, we can decide about it later, but it's just something that I was thinking about that, that I thought would, you know, maybe be helpful for all of us too. Because, you know, when we talk about it amongst us, there might be a whole different conversation that we don't know about or see in the building. And it'd be important for us to see that also.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, so professional development, more professional development, seems like that's what we want. I'm not trying to speak for everyone, but I think of, you know, unless somebody objects to that and says no. But yeah, now going back to Tom's comment about the strategic plan, that's another thing that I've been also, I've been wondering about. And I had asked Superintendent about it too, you know, when was the last time that we looked at a strategic plan? And I know strategic plans, that organizations go through the strategic plan every five or 10 years, depending on the need. But maybe it's time to take a look at it, to review it, to see if there's anything that needs to be added or changed to the language of our strategic plan, probably. I don't know, it's maybe a conversation. What do you think, Superintendent?
Last time our strategic plan was refreshed was back in 2017. Now, I agree with, I think, Board Member Bennett brought it up. Another about the need to update our strategic plan. All the things we've talked about here starts with the strategic plan.
Yeah.
Second thing in the strategic plan is values. We talked about all these things about values. Values drive how we make decisions, how we set policy, and all our goals. So the values need to be revisited. Because the values right now, as all of you know, are student-focused values, such as citizenship, integrity, honesty. What we're talking about here is the district values. So I believe that needs to be talked about. And values also drive the policy development. Because when we talk about cultural proficiency, it all starts with values. And then also the metrics that will come up with all goes back to the values. Then we may even have to revisit our vision. Our vision talks about careers, pathways to career college. How does cultural proficiency and the social emotional support, Safe Supportive Schools, fit into that vision? It is something totally new. All this thing takes, it's a process of developing a strategic plan. You need to engage the community. This is going to take a lot of work, everyone. This is heavy lifting because there's some people who may not agree with this. But this is where the value statements comes in. So I think that's a really good book, goal for the board to take on. So I agree, Director Kaufman.
Okay, thank you. And we'll bring that conversation back to the table in a little bit, then when we're looking at our, at our goals. And another thing that I had for you, Dr. Mitchler, and as you talk about engagement, meaningful, meaningful engagement, advocacy. And, and we can have that conversation, you and I, sometime soon. But, you know, as we look into engagement in the different voices, that, or the voices of our different groups of families, parents, multicultural, multicultural families, I think it's important that we revisit what we had before, where we have parent association groups and that we strengthen that kind of relationship with our groups and with the groups like, for example, the Somali Parent Network. So I just want to talk about that later with you. And as well as affinity groups within the school district, probably. Superintendent?
I won't overdo it, but the strategic plan is the best way to engage the community. To bring them in, have a conversation with them, because they get a say in what the community. A strategic plan is a document that states what the community wants. And then we make all our decisions because we have limited resources. We optimize our limited resources to achieve that strategic plan. And help makes all the decisions. So the best way to engage the community is by doing a strategic planning process.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? Tom?
Yes, well, I just wanted to say that I agree with everything last said. About a question few less is, I agree, this is a lot of heavy lifting and a lot of community engagement. And I was, you know, thinking that this might be something we want to put in one of our goal areas. But I know we're already, you know, have a lot of things on our plate. Is this something that we should be looking at in this next year? Or are you more advising a multi-year process of revising the strategic plan? Or I'm not thinking speaking more to that?
The most important thing that you, the board can do is set its goals. Now, I want to give a heads up to everyone, this is important. There needs to be this discussion about the following. One is the startup start times, right size in the budget. Negotiations is coming up next year. Yeah, next year. We have a referendum in three years. When are we going to do that? Another thing is facility planning, where this whole COVID thing has changed all our facility usage. We need to think ahead. What will our facility needs be? So all these things come into play. Some of this is going to be driven by the strategic plan. The board needs to have a conversation about all this, how it weaves together. all this, how it weaves together. And what are they gonna take, what next steps are they gonna take this year? I agree, Tom, it may take more than one year, but we may want to just refresh our plan as we move toward that, because I think we need to embed some of this stuff that Dr. Mitchler talked about tonight in the plan. And we need to look at some of our values and put it in the plan as a refresh. And a refresh is just something the board, as elected officials, say, we need to do this now. At the same time, a few years, maybe next, the following year, we're gonna do a comprehensive full blown plan. But this is just an incremental step in that direction.
Yes, I think in the 2017, I think that was more for refresh, we kind of redid our, yeah, so it wasn't like a whole over overhaul, which I think we do need, but I mean, yeah, we do have a pretty full plate, so that might be the the best option, let's do a refresh now and then take a longer journey, where we do more community engagement and hear from our stakeholders and everything.
Right.
And one last thing, if you really want to send a message to the community about where the board is at and all these things that's going on right now, talking about a refreshed strategic plan is a way to do it. It's the highest thing that you can state. It's higher than policies, higher than all these other thing, goals, it is the strategic plan of the
Well, the strategic plan is the base of the work that we're doing, so that was the first thing that I thought when when we started this this work with Dr. Mitchler was so what, what about the strategic plan? Because this work needs to reflect that strategic plan, that's the main thing, and so we we do need to go over it. All right, so no more questions for now or comments, anything else, please don't hesitate on reaching out, Dr. Mitchler. She has very good responses to all of our questions. Thank you, Dr. Mitchler.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move to middle school sports update, and for that, we have our Superintendent Les Fujitaki. And then our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zikovich.
Are you here? Yeah, Rod was gonna discuss this topic. Rod?
Yep, Chair Corbin, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. At the last board meeting, we talked about the overall budget, and one of the questions that came up was middle school sports, what was decided on it and how it was budgeted within the budget. Kind of going through the the overall process of a budget in the first place is that it's why we do budgeting at one board meeting, and then give a two week period of time in between for board members to be able to ask questions, ask for more details and the rest before doing the final approval. Based on that is what happened with the middle school sports is what was submitted to the business office was a budget from the athletic directors that did not include any of the middle school athletics in it, and the, at the Galaxy program, there was an additional spot of in their budget for taking on the soccer and volleyball areas within the middle school programs. Based on that, it was probably a bad assumption on my part that we assumed that based on those two choices, that it was decided that the middle school budget was eliminated and offset by those two other areas. Based on that and based on the questions that the board had at the last meeting, the board has technically three options before approving the the budget on next Monday night. One would be is that approve the budget as is, as it was presented the other night. Approve a increase to the budget, which the only area, my understanding, that is not included in the area would be track and field, which was approximately, I think around $75,000, we could add $75,000 to the budget. We can do a resolution right before the approval of the overall budget. Or we can go back to the original $155,000, put that $155,000 back in the budget. And the board can approve that amount in the next, for the board resolution, budget resolution on the 22nd. So again, it was a process of assumptions that we probably should have looked into a little more detail, but with some of the other things going on, didn't look at it as closely as we should have. So looking for guidance for Chair Corbin of what the board would like us to do is parting a resolution before the actual budget resolution for the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Tom?
Yeah, so so Rod, yeah, no fault on anyone's on anyone's end here, I mean, it was kind of a crazy spring and COVID, and I I can see why this this kind of felt, you know, fell off, so. Um, I guess my my question is, you were saying that for wrestling and soccer would be added to Galaxy, so what, is that at an expense? Do you know how much more that's going to add to the budget?
Actually, it's volleyball and soccer that are being added to Galaxy. Galaxy is restructuring their whole budget and their whole staffing model. And are moving toward with these programs of being able to get targeted services dollars to help offset the costs, any additional costs associated with these programs.
Okay.
And so it'd be looking at participation, how much participation they can get for these programs. Once we get those participations, they can plan out those programs once those participations come through.
Superintendent?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Dr. Mitchler for stepping forward. She's she saw what we needed help on as far as this middle school sport, and she and Dr. Coy worked together to, with Rod, to make this happen, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Heather?
So I don't necessarily want to get too in the weeds on this, but with the cross country and wrestling that would be expanded for the seven, seventh and eighth graders to be able to participate in the high school, is there any busing allocations to get kids from the middle schools to the high schools to participate, or would the transportation have to be on their own?
I believe the transportation in the past for kids that are in those programs have been on their own. So I would say that it would stay with with that process.
It's my understanding.
Okay, and then my other question is, the only sport, so of the five sports that are on this chart, soccer is the only one that's not offered at all three locations, Valley View Middle, was Valley View Middle, did it not have much interest or participation this year? Is there a reason why Valley View Middle is not included in the soccer option?
I guess I can't answer that question, why they?
Board Member Stark said, my understanding, the participation was not there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Beth?
I was wondering if the fact that we weren't able to do the spring sports this past quarter, if that helped to release funds that then could be used for this year?
The, the, some of the costs that we saw for benefiting this year are offsetting some of the additional costs that we had for this year. PPE and other programs, all those different things. As you saw with the forecasted budget, we're still saying that we're gonna be pretty much awash with budget this year because of some of the savings that we were able to incur will offset the additional costs that we are incurring.
Other questions? No other questions, comments? Tom?
Well, I mean, it looks like we have three different options, so I don't know if people want to start talking about what's their preferences, and I kind of like the option of the the hybrid model, if you will, where we're cutting half, doing half a cut, and then keeping the track and field and with the track and field and cross country for seventh and eighth grade. I mean, that would probably be my preference, but I don't know what what other board members, their take is.
Done.
So in that option, the, we would need an additional $75,000 though, is that correct, Rod? To to do that option?
Correct, we would add an additional $75,000 of expenses to the budget.
Okay, I guess for me, it would depend, before I could go for that option, it would depend where we have to get that money from, because we know that anytime in the budgets that we have, anytime we do something, we have to take money from somewhere else typically, so.
What it would be is that we would have a larger reduction in the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Heather?
So, and Tom, I think it's just track and field that would be six through 12, the cross country would go to the high school, is that correct? Because Director Bennett mentioned cross country and track and field, but I just want to make sure we're just talking about track and field.
My understanding was just track and field.
Okay, so then, um, this is probably not a fair question to ask without giving you a chance to get the data ahead of time, but there's five sports that we're talking about, cross country, wrestling, volleyball, soccer, and track and field. And the overall budget's $150,000. If we're offsetting four of them into different places, why are we only saving half the cost? Why are we still why is running one sport still costing us $75,000? And you can't answer this now, I'm sorry.
No, I think I think the biggest part of that is that's the majority of the participants have been in track and field, so you have a lot of coaches within that area, where the other areas, they're smaller teams, and there's not as much cost associated with them.
That's right.
Okay, so it was the most cost heavy one was the one we couldn't find a solution for outside of, okay, all right, thanks.
Jim?
Yeah, and just to follow up a little bit more, the track and field requires a lot of volunteers or a lot of help somewhere. BAA unfortunately wasn't able to come up with them as they wanted to. So it's really the cost, like Rod said, the coaches, the timers, and all those types of things, which is many times more in track and field than it is in some of the other sports. And it's also trying to get the people to sign up.
Maya?
I know that you said that there were only a few responses that were positive about the willingness to volunteer for track and field. And I'm wondering who we reached out to when we asked who would be interested in volunteering?
I can respond to that. Board Member Olson, my understanding is the BAA reached out to their network, they contacted approximately 2,500 in their network, and they just got a handful of responses, and they tried, they even made personal phone calls, because they really wanted to try to do it. The BAA tried, wanted to try to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Done?
So if we did the hybrid one year, then is that, I mean, is this just a one year fix? That that would be another concern? Or is this something that we think we can sustain? Is that too hard to answer today?
Well, from my perspective, if the athletic directors and leadership within suggested that as one of the cuts, if they're having to make a two and a half to three million dollar cut next year, I would imagine it's gonna be one of the items that is on the top of the list.
Thank you.
Hold on, Tom. Beth, did you have a question too? Or I thought you raised your hand. Okay, Tom?
No, so Les, I'm wondering if when BAA was trying to to find, you know, be able to work something out, how much of this whole COVID thing came into their inability to do to do this? Do you think that factored in at all?
I don't know. I asked him that question, they didn't know. But they did the survey recently, it wasn't at the height of the pandemic. But they just said they didn't think they could recruit members, especially after they made their phone calls. It wasn't just a paper survey, it was a phone call survey too, where they called people.
Okay, because I mean, I was thinking that if it, maybe if we did the the track and field for one more year, it might give them a longer runway of trying trying to come up with a more viable plan instead of, and we were trying to, you know, talking to them in late winter, they come up with a plan for next year, and then COVID jumped on, it's like, it might be a short runway if we were to give them a longer runway, maybe they might have able to have a a better opportunity to have a replacement plan in two years?
I can call them and find out tomorrow.
Okay. Because I mean, I'm I'm kind of wanting to keep this program, because we've made a lot of cuts to middle school, and and it kind of seems like we're kind of beating up on the middle school kids, and this is, as you guys said, this is the most utilized almost popular sport is the the track and field. And so it's great that we're able to find solutions for all the other sports, but not having anything for this one, I think, is gonna be sorely missed for for our families and and the $75,000 is a is a slight, is a steep price tag, I don't know that has been, what that is, has been taken into consideration that we're we're cutting it by a third, instead of six through eight, we're only do seven and eight. And that if we were to keep it, the fee increases that we did for high school, I would assume those fee increases would be applied to middle school, so were both of those factors considered when you came up with the $75,000 price tag?
Uh, no, the 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 fee increases for the high school were part of the high school needing to cut additional dollars, also $100,000. So that's why they raised their fees is to offset $100,000 cost on their end.
So if we were to match those fees accordingly, would it offset anything without buy us another $5,000, or do you have any idea, or?
I don't know, but you're 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 probably going to have less participation than too, as the fees go up higher also. It's we, what we see in like parking fees and things like that, it's in in a lot of those where they have other options outside the school day and things like that, that if we if we raise our our rates so much, they don't participate.
Maya?
Is there any way to to make it so that it's not including every single activity, you know, just make it a smaller program, because, for example, I was thinking about track and field as being one of the safer sports for for considering the COVID, you know, the running, but I don't, but you know, passing the baton wouldn't necessarily be safe, the the long or the pole vaulting might not be safe jumping onto the mat, so I'm wondering if there's a way to save money by having it be condensed a little bit.
I would defer to the athletic directors on what they could do in that regard.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we're not taking action tonight because it's a study session, but Rod, is there anything else you need from us?
What I need is to be able to provide the board a resolution for Monday night, and also to adjust the budget if needed to be able to do whatever the board, at least in consensus, agrees to doing tonight.
Okay.
It's not formal until you take a vote on Monday, next Monday.
We need to come to an agreement. Comments? Other comments? Tom, you raised your hand.
Well, I was gonna say just what Rod said, we we have to give, let them know which way we're going, and I already gave my opinion, so I think the other six people need to give their opinion.
Okay, Beth? You said hi.
In the, in the back of my mind, excuse me, is this thought of accessibility to all students, and if students are gonna have to, you know, get their own way over to the high school, who's going to be allowed to participate? Given fees, are there any ways that we scholarship based on free and reduced lunch for students? And also thinking of when Trudy was sharing with us about how if you look at participation and your minorities are not in something, why is that? And so I'm trying to weigh these different things. And in the process of doing that, I'm thinking, are we really going to make this accessible to the students that we want to have have it? I would love to say yes, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to be limited access because you have to go to another site and you have a way there. The things that will be at the schools are volleyball and soccer at Oak Grove and Olson with just soccer at Valley View. It's something. So I'm trying to weigh. Does anybody else hear what I'm trying to say or is it confusing to you too? I see a nod, I see a uh-uh. Okay.
Yes, Heather.
Beth, I'm struggling with the same things and, you know, as we were talking earlier about looking at things from an equity lens, I think that's where I'm struggling with that. Because if we are having sixth graders can't participate in two sports altogether and that the seventh and eighth graders have to get themselves to the location to participate, that definitely is, those are barriers. The fact that Valley View Middle School doesn't have a soccer option, I just want to make sure that it would still be potentially on the table if the desire was there for a team at that school. And then, and then track and field, you know, we're looking at keeping it regardless. So for me, similar to what Beth's saying, I struggle with these changes. So I would be in more in favor of just keeping all middle school sports for one more year, recognizing that a lot of work has gone into trying to make this work. But also recognizing too, we don't even know what fall's going to look like. Are we even going to have extracurricular activities? Are we going to have intramural sports? We may be making decisions that don't even become reality in the fall. So I would err on the side of just not changing anything right now and seeing what our reality is going to be and making decisions later. But it's more that equity lens piece that is giving me pause.
Other members, Dawn.
I agree with all of that in that the equity lens and how will people get transportation. But I also weigh that with, we also know that if we brought that entire amount back, then that budget was from the high school budget. That means that they would have more cuts to the high school for staffing. That was what was presented to us then. So also having to weigh that piece of it. So are we, you know, are we adding another layer of class size, higher class sizes, et cetera, to accommodate that money? Or have there been enough changes because of COVID that we wouldn't have to do that? Those are all some of the questions that we're trying to weigh because things are so different now. So I don't know if you can answer any of that, Rod? I don't know.
The cost changes, as I mentioned earlier, the cost changes would be is we would use an additional one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars worth of fund balance this year. It's too late to be able to change anything else in the budget at this point in time. So it becomes is that what we'd have to do is that would be an additional one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars that would need to be cut from the twenty, or two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
So it would not affect class size for another year, but then we may drastically affect the budget for the next year. That's kind of what we have to weigh and ongoing budgets, I guess.
Yeah. Well, the cost of it is approximately one and a half FTE of a teaching staff.
At each school?
No, at total, total amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
But Brad, that is if we continue as full, is that what you said, offering?
If we continue everything, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars is approximately one and a half FTEs of teaching staff.
Okay. Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification, going back to Beth's comment about how the kids from middle school would have to go to the high schools. Well, that's only if we eliminated, if we did the full cut, if we did the hybrid, the partial cut, those, the sports would be saved and would still be available at the middle schools, correct?
Correct, the track and field and the soccer and volleyball would be there.
And we already have in place scholarships for families, correct?
Yes.
That's one of the just clarification on that.
Heather, I think I saw your hand up.
No, sorry, I was just responding to Tom.
Okay. Right, any decisions here, Beth?
So I guess I'm a little concerned because I heard something about Galaxy has revised their budget in such a way or restructured it so that they will be able to cover volleyball and soccer.
Correct.
And so what impact does that have on the budget? What does it take out of what we would have had to take out of the general fund? So if it's now in Galaxy and it used to be in this other part, how much did this cost? And now it doesn't cost this, but Galaxy is taking it on.
No, the Galaxy is part of the general fund budget total. So what it is, is they restructured their budget, reducing some staffing within their budget to be able to make things work. So it has no effect on the general fund.
Okay, so. So Galaxy is reducing staff, but they're going to take on volleyball and soccer?
Beth, allow me to help with this.
Yeah.
If Galaxy was going to start an intramural program, it would attract more students to that program. This is an after-school program. Each student generates their own dollars.
Oh.
The state would have money for this after-school program and that's how we're going to cover it. If the students don't show up, the expenses go away, the revenue goes away.
Okay, got it.
Okay, Tom.
Well, I think it's also important to make the distinction that these aren't the same type of programs. Soccer and Galaxy is a lot different than middle school sports soccer where you're pretty much playing, you're in a conference and you're playing other school districts. Whereas intermural would be more like scrimmaging within the schools. Or maybe you might have like, you know, Valley View versus Oak Grove, but you wouldn't be playing in a conference with other school districts. So it's not, yes, they're taking on soccer and volleyball, but it's not at the same level. It's not nearly the same as a middle school sports program. But you know, as Les was saying, that it might attract more students because it's going to, I don't think there's even a fee for the students or it's very minimal, so it'd be cheaper and it's right after school. And so there's a lot of aspects that are good for an intermural. But also you can kind of make it more for the whole child with not just sports. You can also tie it in to academics and academic support. So they could work on tutoring and mentoring and character development and soccer. There's a lot of benefits for doing the intermural, but it's not, it's not like apples to apples. I don't know if that helps or just adds, makes it more confusing.
No, it's okay.
Maya.
I was thinking, we haven't even, we haven't thought about how a hybrid, hybrid classes are going to look with after-school athletics. If the kids are going to school half-day and then having to come back for athletics or if they're going two days a week or, you know, we have no idea what's going to happen, as Heather said.
Anybody else? Anything else? So I think Rod needs a, it's better idea what would happen in that resolution. Do we feel that we have enough?
What I'm hearing is either two is some of the people are saying just having the seventy-five and some people are saying to keep the whole program, so.
Yeah, I think we have to go around and say which one we prefer so Rod has a better idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, let's start with, who wants to start? You can volunteer to start.
I will.
Okay.
I go for the seventy-five thousand plan.
Okay, that's that. Tom?
Oh yeah, that's where I started from, I'm still in the same spot.
You're there, okay. Wants to go next, Dawn?
Does that mean we just call it the Bennett Plan now? I'll go for the Bennett Plan?
No.
Couldn't help it, Tom, sorry. Yes, I agree, I'm on that seventy-five thousand too.
Okay, who's next?
Jim, I'll go along with the Bennett Plan. Got to have somebody to blame.
You started it, Tom.
Or get credit.
Yeah. Maya?
Okay, I'll go with the Bennett Plan as well. I was very undecided, but, but yeah.
Heather.
I still want to keep them all, but you've already got Quorum, so.
And I will go with the seventy-five.
As long as we don't call it the Bennett Plan.
Yeah, that was a joke.
See, that's why I called it the seventy-five thousand, not the Bennett Plan, okay.
Well, can I say actually Rod, Rod presented that, so really it was Rod's plan. So we're just giving Tom a hard time, but Rod actually brought it first, so.
Well, and the only reason why you guys are joking is because it's a study session, right? To make that clear. Okay, so Rod?
Yep, so we'll do the resolution before the actual budget resolution for eliminating the other programs and tie them into either the high school and/or Galaxy. And the only part that's being kept is the track and field portion of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this back. Okay, so now we're going to move to the board goals, the board and superintendent goals twenty-two, twenty, twenty-one discussion. So we all have that document that, I think we'll start with the board goals. I'm trying to find my own.
Could we have like a five-minute break, you know, a bathroom break? We've been going from this three hours now.
That sounds good to me if everybody's willing to stay an extra time because I think we were planning until nine-thirty, but considering that we're talking about goals, that might be a longer conversation. Is that okay?
I don't want to rush it and I'd rather it won't be fresh, so let's take a five minutes.
Five minutes, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so let's look first at the school board goals. So we have the school board goals from nineteen, twenty-twenty that were approved last year. And you have taken a look at them. We had studies, start times in our governance area, in operational oversight. We have provided support for innovated district projects and negotiated new contracts. Then in the policy area, we have review and update twenty policies if needed. In the community engagement area, we had continued to implement the updated community engagement plan of December twenty, December ten, twenty-eighteen, plan for board succession. And then we have the superintendent relations with collaborate with the superintendent and achieving the above goals. So I'll just leave it open for discussion. Heather.
Can I just respectfully ask for the benefit of those that might be watching that don't have this in front of them? I mean, I can, I just pulled it up, I can screen share. Just, I mean, you just went through them verbally, but I think anyone that is watching this conversation might be helpful for them to be able to see it as well.
Yeah, would someone help us bring that document up? Somebody who's now part of the board, maybe a member of the administration that can just help us presenting it? If you happen to have it in your packet? Dr. Mitchell, do you have it?
Yeah, Chair Corman, I'll look for it. If you have an opportunity to share it with me too, and then I will, I will screen share it as soon as I get a hold of it, that's fine.
Okay. Give me just a second. If you want to start the conversation, I can share it with Dr. Mitchell while you guys are talking, okay? So go ahead and start the conversation, board members. And somebody, I can't, I'm not able to see you, so just go ahead and start because I won't be able to call your name. If you raise your hand, I won't be able to see you. So I'm going to work on sharing those with Dr. Mitchell.
Well, if we start at the top, under governance, is that what it is? Yeah, governance. We have the start time study, we're studying the start times. And obviously we didn't complete that, but it's kind of hard to know if we want to do a second year of that before we get the results from Dr. Julio, Dr. Dave's research. So I don't know if we should just go ahead and continue on with that goal or if we should wait until we hear back from them. I don't know what other board members think of that. Yes, Heather.
So, well, can I just, can I ask, before we go into the details of these, can I just ask a bigger, broader question? Being that this is my first time going through this process. So when I've been through organizations where we've been setting goals, the goals that we have on here are, for lack of a better word, anemic in that they, it's just one phrase and there's no action items that follow. There's no log of evidence, you know, to say like we've, we accomplished it or we didn't or we got halfway through. And like number three, the review and update twenty policies, that's just, in my opinion, the work of the board. That's not necessarily a goal. So will we have an opportunity to talk overarching about what goals are? Or are we literally just going through each one separately and saying, yes, we achieved it, no, we did not, we're moving on, we're just adding to the same, the same five categories? I guess I need, I need something to structure this conversation first before we just dive in.
Okay. Those of you who have had previous experiences being the chair, can you tell us a little bit how this process went before?
Sure, we kind of did, well, there was another one, board evaluation that we did, you know, self-evaluation for a board that we did, it's almost about the same time. But we sat down and we talked, we made a big list of all the different thoughts that we had about what would be good goals or what do we want to have for goals? And then we kind of just narrowed them down and then we rewarded them. And then we brought them into the board, the board's role in the goal statement. So as we went through them, that was pretty much, you know, people's ideas about, okay, now, do we want to go through and start listing all kinds of possible board roles again? Or are there enough of them? I realized that one of them is probably going to be incorporate some cultural proficiency somehow and do strategic, another one would be a strategic plan update. And another one for goals, for an annual goal.
So determine if that would be something that the, the school board will, that the school board would, would pursue. So we started with that and we had a process, and so we need to determine, because we were unable to finish that process, if that's something that we want to continue, having us a goal in our list.
Well, I guess we have to wait until we get the results. We don't, we don't know if we want it as part of a goal. Till we get the results of the study.
Yeah, Dawn?
I just wanted to ask, try to answer what I know of the broader question that Heather was asking about goals. I was not like a parent that attended all board meetings before, so I can't say that this was for sure, I saw it with my own eyes. But what I was told is there was sometimes some boards didn't have any goals, because they weren't able to actually ever agree on, on their goals, or get together on goals. I don't know if that's quite accurate. But any organization, anything that I've been involved in, when you do goals, you go through the old goals first to see if there's anything you want to continue, because otherwise you're not, I mean, the goal's worthless if it doesn't get done, and, and you can decide if you don't want to continue it or not, but, but there's no point in having goals and just changing completely new ones every year and never completing them. So, you know, to have that continuation, any group I've been in has gone through the old goals, and then after that, determine which ones they want to keep, then they go through their process of determining if there's any new things they would like to add to it.
And Tom, you were gonna say something?
That's all? I, I agree with what, what Dawn was saying. I think when we went over the safe and supportive plan, I think Jenna outlined some possible goal ideas. I think it's also important to hear from, from Rick and Les and Jenna on, under each of these categories, under governance, what they see coming down the pipe and what they would recommend. And, and we don't just have to have one in each goal area. We could have several in governance, but I think we kind of need to hit the ones that administration is saying, okay, we really need to be looking at, you know, the the changes from COVID in, you know, the schools and how that's going to impact, so that needs to be a goal area. And we got it, and then when we get through that process of what, a high priority ones, then we can maybe move on to the conversation of, okay, if we have extra time, maybe we can add this one as well. I don't know if that makes any sense?
Yeah, and then, and, and I agree with that to a point, but these are board goals, and we've had discussions in the past. Once we get board goals established, that we feel are goals for the fall, next year, and, and what we, they might include, then we call on the superintendent and others to work with the superintendent's goals, or the superintendent's initiatives, on how they plan to assist us in our goals. You know, as we, as we say, this is what we think we want as a goal. And then, and then that gives them at least some opportunity to look at them and maybe tweak them a little bit for us, or else add to their own list of what they want to do and see us, you know, the biggest one, of course, for the superintendent's goals is make sure that board does, does well and works with the board. So, you know, that's kind of another, he needs to see what we want to come out with before he recommends, oh, you should really do this, or with Jenna and, and Rick, no, you gotta have more of this, so. So that's what's kind of difficult to do, is how are we going to come up with our goals for 2021?
Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to help out by sharing how these goals were developed and why they're developed, the ones that, the 1920 school board goals. The first is governance, study start times. A number of community members came forward, they were pushing us for, and board members were pushing for a start time study. So it's just one, one phrase there, but what happened was the board chose to establish a start time committee. They put three members together to work on this thing. Board members chose to wait, my recall, until after election before taking action, because if the board's going to change, they said, why do this thing? And the composition of the board is going to change on such a controversial topic. But what happened when January, and all of a sudden COVID start anyway, though, and it just, we didn't get much done, so we were trying to do all this research, gather research, but we got sidetracked. But that's how the start of the study came up. And then now, as far as this about support innovative projects, the board talked about that the mission statement called us to be educational leaders. Well, every time we keep looking at what kind of innovative projects we can come up with. And the one thing we've talked about is the two projects, or three projects that we wanted to be innovative on this year was the Special Ed Information System. The other one was PGP, and the third was ACT MCA. Those are three big projects. Some of this would require legislative support from the board to get it done. So the board just said, those are the three major things. But there are strategies behind each one of these things. It just wasn't with one liners. The other thing was on policy. Not too long ago, we, the board wasn't updating the policies. Some of the policies were over 30 years old, untouched. In fact, David Holman told us we were actually at risk because the policies were illegal, what we were stating. So the board took a lot of time working on policies, and then they said, well, fine, let's do 20, 20 years, a lot. But then they said, let's, so they've, they've actually ground through these policies. Maybe now the policies, the policy committee, the foreign policy committee is pretty good shape now. Maybe we can drop down, but there was a while where the board says, we need to stay intentional and really focus on this thing and clean up our policies. That's the reason why it's there. And community engagement, all of you know, we have a community engagement plan. We started the Bloomington Public School Advocacy Council. There's things that go on every year, and then that was an area the board wanted to focus on. This is, this is what we need to do. That's how we came up with these goals here. Now, we have a whole new discussion here, a bunch of other goals. It depends. I listed down probably 10 or 12 major goals the board could take on. If this, what's the capacity of board? The board has to talk about this thing. What did he want to focus on? You have only so much capacity to take on. And so that's how, we could have had a much longer, robust list last year, but we just said, look, we just got to focus on this, from my recall.
Main ones, yeah. Thank you, Superintendent. Heather, you, you raise your hand.
Well, I just, so one of my questions is, are these five overarching categories stagnant? Do you always choose a governance and operational oversight, or do those change as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we had a professional development question before with another company, Cheesebrow Teamwork International, they told us that these are the five categories we should look at. They were so, those are the five major categories. So that's how we built a strategic plan, and then we built it around these five major categories. And that's where, how the goals were set, based upon that training. But that was a while ago. It's not certain, but we have to follow these five.
Dawn?
I just wanted to add that, you know, in the, in the world, the world is always changing, but we've seen a lot more in the last few months than maybe in other years. And so things that were a priority before may not be a priority when we get done with these goals. So we may be changing all of them, part of them. Those are the discussion we have to have. So, you know, definitely, things that we thought were maybe the top priority are, you know, way down in the bottom 10%. Now, I don't know until we talk about it, so.
Right. So we need to have a discussion and determine which one of those we considered necessary to keep at this point, or if we need to make additions. Beth?
Yeah, I mean, with all the changes that have happened, I mean, we really, last year, we were thinking, we had gotten information, we started reading literature about school start times. And then we said, we want evidence to see if this helps with learning. And if it doesn't, then we don't want to pursue it any further. So when we have our meeting this week about the start times, then we'll have the evidence to know if it's something to go either way. But as a chair of that board, I'm also suggesting that, right now, we're just concerned about how kids are going to get to school, and if we're going to have school, and what it's going to look like. So it's almost like we need to table this until school gets back to a more stable place where, where we're, you know, normal again, as far as how schools function, with a specific start time, without all the complications of COVID. So that's something we have to discuss when we have our meeting on Wednesday. But I see that one as one that may need to be tabled in light of other emergencies.
Well, Maya?
Would our goal be changed now to deciding on how we're going to do the hybrid model or the distance learning, instead deciding, you know, making decisions on what we're doing this fall?
No, I think our, our goals are more broad than that. That's more of a management area, where that, then that will be brought to the board. But when we look at the, the goals, we're looking at, at the broader side of it, it's, you know, what are the main things that we want as a school board seeing happening in the, in the district? And then we look at our superintendent goals based on those board goals.
Right. And just to reiterate kind of what Les is saying, there are the five categories of the board's role. Governance, operational oversight, policy review and update, community engagement, and superintendent relations. Now, under those general categories, we could put a lot of specifics, or a lot of, you know, different types of things that fall under those, those titles. And so I think that's what we probably need to concentrate on, is what should those goal statements and board engagement of those general categories be?
Yeah, with this study start times, as it, as it says, is a study. So what we initiated last year was with the intention of studying that possibility. And that's something that we were not able to accomplish because of the different situations that were already mentioned. And so this year, we haven't been able to get there either. We haven't been able to get to the findings of the research yet. And that's what we will hear in the next, in the next meeting. So the question there would be, do we, well, I guess we have to keep it there, because we still haven't accomplished that, the study part of it, and maybe just consider it to be temporary until we make a decision on whether or not we continue with it, and then have it open for maybe dropping it later? Thoughts? Sound good, Tom? Okay, so is that okay with everybody? We just keep it there in the list until we make a decision? Because we have not completed the study, and part of that study is the information that's going to be brought to us in the next weeks.
Yes, I imagine it's with all that's gone on with COVID, there's a lot of people aren't reaching their, or meeting their, their goals in other districts as well. And I can't imagine dropping it, because it might become something that we could pick up in the future, too. Right?
Superintendent?
My recall is this, when the start time committee, subcommittee of the school board met, they said that they wanted to make sure that we're looking at this not for qualitative reasons. We want to look at quantitative reasons, and they wanted to look at whether student achievement was affected by changing the start times. How was student achievement affected by changing the start times? So Dr. Caesar said that he thought by using Minnesota's student survey information, he could answer that question for the board. Unfortunately, he's dependent on the state to get that information, and they were slow in giving him that information. He was waiting and waiting and waiting, they kept putting him off for good reason, but, and that's why he finally got it. And now he's digesting the information, and that's why it's so late in the year. He had originally planned to get that in summer of last year, or in October, September, October of last year, and be able to get it done for the board. And I kept telling the board, I'm sorry, but we didn't get the data, the, the committee, rather, that we didn't get the data. That's my recall. And, and the committee was fine. They said, yeah, let's just wait. We're gonna have a change over the board. Let's just wait. That's the information. And so now it's at the 11th hour. Julio said he has the information. He's going to share it next week, or this week, with the board committee.
On Thursday? Or is it Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you.
Correct. Good, yeah. And we totally understand, you know, all the different obstacles that were on our way, and everybody's way in the past year. Okay, so we keep it there. Okay. All right, let's go to that operational oversight.
Is there anybody that has any recommendations for any governance type goals? That want to add, throw up in the air for consideration? Anyone? You will?
Okay, do we want to go over the new ones, the new additions before we decide something in there? Or we just go through the list and decide whether or not we keep it, so that we start dropping things, maybe that are unnecessary, and then we can fill them with other ones?
Yeah, I'd rather go through the whole list first. I agree.
All right.
I didn't know if you were done with governance. Look, just move on. We'll keep that and let's go on.
We'll come back to that for sure. There's a lot to talk about. Okay, so that number two, that operational oversight. So Superintendent, talk to us about that innovative district projects, and negotiating new contracts. So any thoughts on that, Superintendent? Any recommendations?
I think, I think those should be replaced. We have a list of other things that can replace them.
So we're good on that, because we, we worked hard in all those different areas through the year. Dawn?
Well, I just had a question, though. Are we still through the state innovation zone? Do we still have that? Is that expired? When does it expire? I can't remember. Two years, three years?
We're still Innovation Research Zone Pilot District.
Okay, for how, how long is the pilot for? How much, how long, how much longer?
I believe we have four years left on our.
Okay, that's all. So we do have to do some, we do still have to support the things that are part of that?
We, it's operational.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions on that, those two?
Well, I would like to add the strategic plan in there.
Yeah, Superintendent?
That should go on the governance. I don't want to get ahead like Tom said, but that should go there.
Right, let's, let's do the dropping first, like we talked about.
Yeah, let's get through the list first.
Okay, so we're good taking those two out of there? Are you guys comfortable with that? Taking those, those two items out of number two, out of operational oversight?
Just to say that we are still in negotiation with one of our bargaining units. So we're hoping that that will come to an end, but that hasn't been achieved yet.
Superintendent?
Mr. Corbin realized we're going to start negotiations January of this coming school year.
Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I think what Heather was saying earlier, it's like, that's the work of the board. I mean, does that need to be a goal, negotiating new contracts? I mean, were we not negotiating new contracts? So I don't think it really needs to be in there, because it's a given. We, we have no choice. We have to negotiate new contracts. We don't need a goal to, to hold us to it. I think there's statute that holds us to that.
Superintendent?
The idea behind that is the board would sit and develop parameters for negotiations. That was a board, and they would, they would talk about the high level stuff, like, do we want to do back-to-back contracts? Do we want to do a me-too contract? Do we want, those are the discuss, the high level discussions that we needed from the board. The philosophy behind contract negotiations. And that's why we had it on there, because all these questions keep coming up. And do, do we differentiate benefits? We keep coming up, and then we keep talking about this, and we said, we really need to do that upfront before we get in the midst of negotiations, then start talking about it. We need to have runway for the board to talk about these things, is it? We're going to stick to these things, and this is what we want to achieve.
So can we reword that then, to not just negotiate new contracts? So can we reword that then to not just negotiate new contracts? And then instead of saying, you know, devise, um, different negotiating strategies or something? Cause it, it just sounds like that's a, that's a given.
Right.
Okay. Are, are we good with that? We drop in, provide support for innovative district projects? And we keep the second item, but under a different name?
The word.
Okay, everybody? Okay, good. Let's go into number three, policy review and update 20 policies if needed. Okay. Discussion around that. Beth?
I know that we are getting close to, um, completing the amount that we needed to get done. But maybe we should have a different perspective, um, when we're looking at the policies to look at them for cultural competency. To have a different focus as we look at them.
Okay. So, uh, Tom?
Yeah, I agree with, with what Beth just said, but I, I would think that, um, my preference would be able, would keep this one, but then add another one, you know, to examine goals through a lens of cultural efficiency or, or check for, for bias. But I, I would, as Les was saying earlier, doing 20 policies in a year is a lot. And I think that I usually continue that. So I would like to keep that 20 benchmark. Do we need it as a goal? Maybe not, but I think it might be worth keeping and then just adding another goal under there about the cultural proficiency.
So we're talking about keeping the review and update of policies, but under different conditions that we will bring up in a, in a little bit. Is anybody opposed to keeping that one?
I'm not opposed. I'm not opposed. I just thought of something. Um, so I'm, I'm fine with adding that language in there. But I would hope that we've been looking at the policies through that lens all the years that I, you know, that I've been on the board already. So, um, you know, I guess stating it is different than, than saying that we were doing it, but, but I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, hmm, I think the majority of us were looking at those things every time we read a policy and every discussion we had, so.
That's a good point.
I think it's, well.
Uh, Tom?
I think it's worth mentioning. Yeah, I'm, we should be transparent community. This is what we're doing. We're looking at our, we know that cultural, you know, that there's racism that exists in public schools. We're, we're cognizant of that. We're not trying to hide the fact and we are being mindful of that. And we are examining our policies to do everything we can to root out racism in our school district. So I think.
I wasn't arguing, I wasn't arguing to take it out. I was saying, I agree with the language, but I was just saying, I'm hoping that all of us as board members were already doing that when we looked at them. That's all. I wasn't arguing to take it out.
Okay. All right. Are we good there? Seems like Heather?
I just, this, this process is kind of driving me batty. I don't, I don't know how else to say this. It's also 9:25 and we've been in a board meeting for three and a half hours. It's, it's, I'm trying to choose my words carefully. It feels like middle school, um, classroom cuts all over again. Like I'm overwhelmed. I don't understand what we're doing. I, I didn't feel like I was really prepped very well for today, you know, and to not have, here's the process we're going to go through here. The things you should have come to the meeting ready to go. I, I'm really struggling with how we're making these decisions. Um, and considering this is one of the biggest pieces of what school boards do, it feels rushed and, um, and I'm frustrated. So I'm just putting that out.
Remember that, remember that we're not making a decision tonight. This is just the discussion around it. Just want to make sure you remember that.
Approving them next, aren't we approving them next Monday? Cause we don't have a, we don't have a board meeting in July. So we're either approving them next Monday or we wait till August.
I think you'll get it, an email with them all summarized though, and that kind of stuff after the discussion. So I just want to make sure you understand.
Yeah. And I, and I can understand how that might feel frustrating, uh, for our new board members as well. I think it's, it's part of that is probably the fact that this is the way that it has been done through the years. Or we, we meet once a year and we have this kind of discussion as we go over that process, but we can always look at, um, other ways of, 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 you know, having this process done. And also at the end of each year to go back to our, our goals and, and see which ones have, have been met before we move into the next year with the new goals, which we have also done. Yeah, Beth?
I don't know about you all, but after three hours I start to have a hard time concentrating. And, you know, we've had more of these four hour meeting sessions. And it, it's a draining. I mean, Les has to go back to work tomorrow. And, you know, we don't, but we need to be creative. We need to be able to think clearly. I, I actually feel as though we've left something very important to the last part of our energy for the night. And, um, I also understand what Heather is saying because, um, every time we do a new thing, it's like it's a new protocol. And there, there's no handbook given to new board members about what that protocol is. It's just put in front of you and you're like, okay, how's this going to go? And you go to the meeting. And, and I've been thinking about this, that, that some of the questions that Maya and Heather have had or apprehensions they've had have been due to the fact that there is a lack of direction. And I'll be honest, I think one of our goals needs to be that we come up with a school board member handbook to know what is coming and what is happening. Because it takes a long time. This is my third year and I'm starting to get a hang of it, but it's all kind of catch it as it happens and try to learn it. But it doesn't come around enough for you to really, um, internalize it until you've been on it for a bit longer. And, um, I think it's a disservice to new board members looking back. Um, you don't know that you have the question until it comes there. And then you're like, oh, am I supposed to know something that, that, that everybody else knows? And, and so, and maybe that's part of the mentoring processes where the mentor goes ahead of time and says, this is the next thing coming up. This is what we need to teach you about this. And when this comes up, this is the process that we go through. So, um, I, I'm, I'm frustrated that it's 9:30 at night and we're dealing with this. I would really like to see us do this at a fresh time.
Uh, okay. I understand the frustrations and the concerns about time. And it's, it is our, our last, um, item, but then the question here is we're moving forward with this because this is something that we had set as a, as a weak goal or, um, completing it so that we can also, um, continue with our professional development. And, and this is a good conversation, you know, it's a good item that you, we can probably bring to our next session with MSBA. That would be also my recommendation that we have those type of conversations when we are there. Maya?
I was just, I was just going to say that I, I really appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying Beth, that, um, you know, because you were the newest member before us, so it's all fresh in your memory. That you're very supportive of us as being new. Um, I also, as far as this goes, I am pretty much trusting the, the people who have been on the board for a while. I'm just kind of going along with trusting them. So I'm okay, I'm okay completing it since we're almost done, but, um, but, uh, I'll go along with either one.
Okay. Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I better give my historical perspective again too. We've gone through this before and I don't know if we really need to have, um, an action item on this coming up. Um, some of the things that I've gone past back into 2018, 2019, we did have under study start times, it talked, well, just to say, for instance, we did talk about several options. Then as we went on to new project, we had several options underneath there. They didn't necessarily get into the final goal statement. But at least we reviewed them. We had the facilities plan. We had, uh, a variety of other operational things that we did do. And then the community engagement, we wound up with about three or four different items under that. And then we, we, um, narrowed it down to this one. And the same thing with plan for board succession. That was done, you know, in order to take care of the fact that, uh, Dick was leaving and how do we do that? So there are some more things that can probably be submitted underneath each of those five categories. If, if we had, uh, fresh minds and ideas to do it. So I guess from a superintendent's standpoint, I don't think we need to have an action item on this coming up in June, do we?
Superintendent?
Make sure. My recall is this, for this process was that we would have a multiple meeting process where this would be discussed because we have new board members. And because of all this discussion that's taking place, we wanted to do the safe, supportive schoolwork. It's, it's, it's what we need to do. That's why we brought up the strategic plan refresh. These are big things. The board needs to take more than one session. And if it needs to be, we may, I'm going to say it. Me, we may need a July session to do this work because we have COVID, we have all this stuff for fall planning that's coming up. Depending on what you decide on the, on a board goal could mean that we have to work, start working with the board in July now to prepare for fall. So all these things, I thought it was going to be multiple sessions that we'd have a conversation with the board about. I didn't expect to finish tonight because of all these things and the board has, one of the challenges the board is going to have to do is prioritize. There's so many things to do.
Right.
Board has only so much capacity. What's the board going to focus on? And then if you give me 15 items you want me to do, I'll work with you to help you be successful. That's, then I'm going to have to pass it all down to teams that are already working.
Yeah.
So, so all these things, it's one of those things you, you said, did I come back? I talked to the team and we, we do this kind of cycle back and we talk about what's, what's realistic for everybody.
Tom?
Well, there's nothing that says we have to have these goals approved in June. I mean, we could come back. Yeah. So, I mean, I would rather it's not rushed, but is everyone at this point fried? Can we no longer have a conversation? I mean, we've been waiting to have the conversation. Now we're, we're having a conversation about having the conversation. So can we at least have some conversation and then maybe do another session in July?
Yes, because my concern would be that there, there is, there are some, uh, projects in place. And in order to be able to move forward with those projects, we also need to have this part clear with our, with our goals. And we're also having the MSBA, um, professional development session too. And so it will be helpful to complete those before we go into that PD session with MSBA as well. So we don't have to go too deep into this, this, this kind of document, but if we can at least have some sort of an idea of what is actually necessary at this point for what we have in the list and what would be some of the things that we will add? If we can at least have that and then have further discussions on, okay, what, what does that mean and how we're going to do it? Beth?
Yeah, I, I, um, I agree. I think discussion is great. Making a decision, I just don't feel like we could do that, that tonight. And I'm glad to hear from Les's perspective that it's over a series of meetings. If we need to meet in July, then, then let's do it to just, it's, it's so much coming at us with, with the COVID and, um, uh, just the tension that is within our community right now is really high. And so, um, I think it's really important that we be thoughtful about this and open and listen to each other. Listen to Les. He has a heartbeat that he hears from out there as well that we need to take in. I appreciate that.
Dawn? Thank you.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say, can we either continue the discussion or quit? Because we're, have valuable amount of time here and we're talking about how long we've been going. And we spend all this time discussing whether we're going to keep going. Can we either just do it or, or be done? I would like to either continue or, or be done with the meeting. Let's get, make a decision and do it.
Right. Well, let me ask everyone, um, how many of you would like to continue the discussion tonight? Is that fair to ask? I'll say yes.
Yes.
Dawn, Maya says yes. I think we have at least four people who would like to continue the discussion. And we have two people that are preferring that we continue another time. So we're going with a yes? Okay, good. Let's go with a yes. Where were we? Uh, okay. Decided that we're going to keep that item for now. Okay. That's what we talked, let's talk about community engagement. And for that, we have two different items, continue to implement the updated community engagement plan of December 10, 2018 and plan for board succession. Maya?
Okay. So that's something we don't know what that is, right Heather?
Yeah, superintendent, can you, uh, address that item one, one more time? Number four?
I can.
Or Dawn? Yeah.
Well, I can just say that it's my bad, it's my fault. We haven't met because we haven't had a meeting during COVID since this all started. So, um, the committee hasn't met to look at the plan and really discuss, um, where we are and if we want to update it and things we want to change. So we have to have a committee meeting. Um, I would say that we still have to continue. Whether we update it or not, we still have to continue to implement whatever community engagement plan we have, whether it's existing one or an updated one. So you could just leave that, continue to implement a, a community engagement plan.
Anybody else? Tom?
Yeah, we're going to keep that one, which is fine, but we might want to put in there, continue to implement the updated school board community engagement plan because it's different in community engagement plans. And I think that might be confusing. There's a, a district community engagement plan and then there's a board one. So which one are we talking about here?
Very good. Cause people have been very confused about that. Good catch, Tom.
Good one.
Plus it looks funny to say updated plan of December 2018.
Well, we can just say continue to implement the, the school board community engagement plan.
Beth?
And then, um, this is one where we'll need to discuss more because in light of COVID and in light of the surveys and information we just saw today, there may need to be additions made, um, for this unique season.
I agree with that. We're good in there. Um, plan for board succession.
Anyone planning on resigning this year? If no, then we probably don't need that goal.
I agree. We don't need it. What did you say, Maya?
I have to laugh.
Were you, were you hoping some of us were going to say yes or what?
There's just.
I guess, I guess like in the fall of 2021 though, there will be an actual election where, um, you know, if that is for my seat, Dawn's and Tom's and Jim's.
And those are legacy seats. They don't go back up for reelection. We're just, we have those for life. So we don't have to worry about that.
You think so?
Okay, let's move on. Okay. So we agree, we don't need that item in there right now. We can always come back if something, something unusual happens. Um, then the last one we got here is superintendent relations. And in that we have collaborate with the superintendent on achieving the above goals.
That's another one that I think is, that's, that's a given. I don't know if we actually need that explicitly written in, in the, as a goal. I mean, if, if we're not going to collaborate with them to achieve, then what are we doing this for? So I don't know if we need to, you know, spell that out. That's just my opinion.
Anybody else? Heather? Heather?
I agree with that one. I, I think that's, and I don't want to derail the conversation again, because I already did that once, but that's where this also, you know, like, I, I'm struggling with the difference between a goal and like your plan of work, right? Like, the things that we should just be doing as a school board every year, all the time versus the things that are unique to this year. Because I feel like the goals, I, I even struggle with keeping Dawn's with the community engagement plan, because at what time are you gonna take that off? Right? So for me, the goals are, what are the things that we want to get done in the 2020, 2021 school year, period? Everything else is just stuff that we should be doing anyway as part of being a school board. So that, that's another place that I'm getting kind of caught up in this is, you know, because I feel like we're keeping things on here that aren't necessarily unique to this school year. So maybe I'm seeing the goals wrong? Maybe I'm not understanding? That's totally possible. I mean, this is, this is hard as a first year person to do it. And to be doing it, I can't even like smile at y'all and say, you know, and see your reactions and stuff. So it's a tough conversation to have digitally, too.
Yeah. Okay, so any other thoughts? Should we?
Can I, can I just clarify one thing, since they, maybe everybody doesn't know this, but the community engagement, I think it got on there because that's relatively new. There wasn't even a community engagement committee. It was newly formed. I don't remember what year, but in the six years that Tom and I've been on, it was formed. So I think that's why it got on there, because it was a new thing. And it's only been revised once. I think we've only had two versions, so it's relatively new.
Excuse me, may I say something?
Yes, Mrs. Bonkow?
Um, we did, the school board community engagement plan was updated in February of 2020. And I'll be happy to share that with the board.
That would be great.
I thought there was a more recent one, but I didn't know when it was, so I didn't want to say anything. But I did think there was another one, but I didn't know it was February. Thank you. Seems so long ago, doesn't it?
You're welcome.
Okay. No other thoughts about that one? So we're dropping that, that specific line? Collaborate with the superintendent? Because if we have these items, superintendent relations, that means that we will probably have to come up with something else. So maybe it's, it's a different, we're looking at it from a different perspective or just a new goal or because this is just one part of the five items as Les had mentioned before that came, came out as a result of professional development of suggested points that we could have for our goals as board members. Okay? Good. All right. So let's, let's go back, because I know that everybody wants to go back and give ideas of what other possible things we might want to see included in the school board goals, new things. So Tom, you start. You have your, your ideas. You wanted to go for it. So go for it now.
Well, I think if we're gonna go to the top of the list and we go back to governance, I think we, we decided we're gonna keep that study start times on there, at least until we get, we hear from Dr. Julio about what, what that tells us. But then also, we need to put in the, the safe and supportive schools. Need to implement that and we need to revise our strategic plan. And that's gonna be a lot. I don't know what else we want to add to that.
I agree. Strategic plan will take a lot of energy and a lot of meetings.
Um, Beth?
Should we say begin working on the strategic plan overhaul? Because it will take time. And I think there's gonna be a lot on our plate this fall. So it may not be until things settle a little bit with COVID, until we can actually address that. But to begin the process.
Tom?
No, I think as Les was saying earlier, that maybe we do the revision, which is a lot less work. And then, so maybe that would be our, our goal this year, revise the student or strategic plan. And then maybe next year, the year after that, we look at overhauling our strategic plan. I don't know, Platts, if you wanted to give us any input on that?
Les?
The last time the strategic plan was refreshed was December of 2017. Okay, that's when we changed it to pathways to career in college. We haven't touched it since. That's about two and a half years ago. So it's time for a refresh. Makes sense. What you heard tonight is critical. What we talk about, the safe, supportive schools, it's gonna be needed. It's also gonna frame for everyone what the position of the board is with respect to this cultural proficiency, all this thing that's going on, all this drama that's going on. It's a good reference point for everybody to see. Here's where we stand. Here's our values. This is what we mean. And that's why the refresh of the strategic plan, to me, is critical at this point. But it's up to the board. The board needs to talk about this thing.
Um, who's that? Jim?
And one of the other aspects of the strategic plan with the vision and everything else like that, we have to include all kinds of stakeholders. When we, we can reva- refresh this one, but when we get into a new one with cultural proficiency and some of those other ones, we have to include stakeholders. So we wound up having a group of about 40 that developed the strategic plan, including staff, stakeholders, everybody else, citizens. So that is going to be a sizable task, you know, when we get into doing that, when, whenever it is.
Heather?
So I had mentioned this earlier when we first started the conversation about, I did my homework and I looked at other school districts, board goals and such. And a lot of them have, you know, like, for example, you'd have study start times and then you'd have three things that you want to accomplish under that. And then whatever your body of evidence that you're gonna use to say, yes, we accomplished that goal or not. So what I would like to suggest is that, like the study start times, the, the start times subcommittee, when they meet on Wednesday or Thursday, maybe they come up with some more robust action items regarding their goal. And then same thing with strategic plan, because we could talk all night about all the different pieces to it, but that could maybe be a superintendent chair, vice chair decision that they come up with. What are the, you know, one, two, three action items that are gonna get accomplished this year versus what could be accomplished long term? Just because, well, it's how I think. And I know that's not necessarily what everybody else thinks, but it just helps me frame as to like, what exactly are we doing this, this fiscal year, this school year, however we frame it? But I don't think that necessarily, I don't feel like I need to have an opinion on how the school start times or the strategic plan details work. That can be other folks' jobs, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree that the, the wording of it, then we can work into the, the details of it, of each one of those items. I do think that the strategic plan, it's, it's an important component of the work that we're doing here. And I think it's important to include it in that, in that first item of governance, so that we can help our administration also to start working into this, in this plan. And, you know, Superintendent has used the word refresh. We're not necessarily looking right now into going deep into changing our whole strategic plan. This is not what we're doing. We're just revising, we're just refreshing maybe some of the items that would be needed in, for, for us in order to develop the further plans. And yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks, Chairman Chair. This has been a great conversation this evening. I know it's, it's getting late, but I just wanted to weigh in a couple of things as I'm listening to the board. I think what's key, need to be kept in mind as you develop the, your goals for next year is the pandemic isn't going away anytime soon. And in fact, we're, it is highly likely that a second wave is gonna hit states that have not been hit. That's going to impact our community. It's gonna impact, impact our, our staff and our families. And it's going to, in many respects, look like last spring or this most recent spring. And some epidemiologists are expecting that it will actually be worse. The other thing is, is that with the pandemic, or now we have the, really, the, what's been thrust upon school districts, particularly across the country, but here in Minnesota, is, as we've been talking about, cultural proficiency and social injustices. And these are landmark pieces, I think, the board and the district is going to wrestle with, as well as our community for the foreseeable future. So while there's a lot of great ideas being put out there in terms of goals, I just want the board and all of us to keep in mind that we, we may be setting up a lot of goals that will become, become unattainable because of the, what we don't know and what we're about to face. And so be careful about choosing too much to, to bite off right now.
Yeah. And I think we definitely need to maybe focus on this safe and supported schools plan. Definitely, it's, it's something, it's, in my opinion, should be going in that first item. So because it's, it's gonna show our commitment to this plan for this year as we started. And for the strategic plan, and then once again, my concern would be that maybe we're missing something, some specific line in the strategic plan that might be on the way of accom- accom- accomplishing the, the safe and supportive schools plan. So if we can just, and that's something that we can look at with administration, you know, if the board agrees that we can maybe do some, something in that strategic plan that doesn't necessarily include a long process. It doesn't have to be a super long process, but if we need to do some sort of quick refreshing there, that is, that is meaningful, well done. So that be okay with everyone? If we address that, we added there, but knowing that we are not gonna go through the very deep process of it, where we look at the vision, the mission, and every single one of the items. But, you know, we have talked about the values. Superintendent brought up the, the conversation about the values in the strategic plan. And in, in looking at those values might be very helpful as we move forward with, with our next plan. I just don't see how we're gonna support our safe and supportive schools plan without looking into that refreshing of the strategic plan. Okay? I see people nodding. Is that okay?
Yep, yep, I agree. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Rick. Anything else? Not in, not in that first item, not in the governance item, but in any other items that? Heather?
Well, I know that at the beginning, you talked about that you, you know, you've set these five pieces as your, as your structure for goals. But as we've been talking, it sounds as though the safe and supportive schools really is the overarching conversation for everything here, right? The policies, we talked about doing that, and that, you know, could you, I want to say flip the goals on their head, but I don't know. I don't know how to say that. But if that's gonna be the, it, it feels like if the safe and supportive schools is just one of 10 things, we're not necessarily showing that it's the most critical or the most important.
Thoughts on that?
Sure. I don't know if that really is the most overriding right now. Like I said, we, we probably should have the other meeting in, in July. And we need to find Highstead and Company about, you know, what the, and Kaufman Associates, how are the next batch of surveys is gonna come out, you know, and what we do for school? The actual start of school, how we're gonna play the school hybrid or whatever it is. Then, once we get some of those basic things done, how we're gonna structure our schools, how transportation is gonna be done, then I think we can go into incorporating the cultural proficiencies in those plans as they develop.
When we look at that, when we look at that, safe and supportive schools, and while it's not the only goal, it just seems to cover, to be part of every one, each one of the other goals that we have in there. Because as we talked before, making policy and the review of our policies, I mean, that is related to the same plan. When we talk about community engagement, and we saw in the plan as well, that was presented by Dr. Mitchler, it is part of this, is part of the advocacy and then engagement. And so it's already there. All those components will be already in each one of those items that we're seeing. I think it's basically by putting it there in that first item, we're just saying openly that we're making a commitment to that, to that new plan, to that new direction and how things will go. And as we look into the fall and what the fall, and what fall is gonna look like in terms of returning to school or not returning to school, and the, with the different options that are presented in front of us, we're also gonna need this type of work. So it just, it's all related to each other. Tom, you were raising your hand.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, we've kind of given administration kind of what our priorities are, which seems to be like we really want to get into the safe, supportive schools. We really want to get into the, the refreshing the strategic plan. And we really want to focus on some cultural proficiency and moving on with that. So being that it's like 10 o'clock at night, we've been here four hours. I don't know if that's enough. And then we can just go ahead and hold off until July. And then we can see what, maybe we'll have more information, what school's gonna look like, because, you know, depending on what COVID's doing and what the, you know, MDH is saying, that might drive what our goals are gonna end up being. So I don't know, unless you guys want to keep on talking for another half an hour.
Well, I think that we got it in that third item, we got it pretty clear what, what the intention of the board was. I think administration can help us with that. Yeah. As Superintendent?
I can't hear you. Turn on your mic, Les.
Okay. Chair Corbin, would you be open to another meeting in June?
Oh, yes.
Talk about this. While it's fresh.
Yes. So can we have? Yeah, can we have a meeting when we only have those two items, these school board goals and the superintendent goals?
I would recommend it.
Okay, that sounds like a, a plan.
Yes.
Everybody in agreement with that. So I think for now, we're done. So thank you, everyone. And thank you, administration. If there isn't anything else, I think we can end our meeting here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Night, y'all. Okay.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks for your input. Bye, Julio.